Okay. Madam Secretary, please note for the record that all council members are here. We have a full quorum. And with that, I will open our special meeting.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As always, I would like to welcome our citizens here tonight. We're always glad to have you to come in here and participate with us as we talk about the business of our city. We'll move now into, is there any announcements from staff or anything? Seeing no announcements, I will open it up for citizens' communication. I have a list here. I think we have a short list tonight, so anyone who wants to speak to any item, I'll start with Mr. Alvarez. I think you're listed.
He has a walk-up song.
He's got a walk-up song there.
Yeah, yeah.
Nobody ever calls me anymore. Emmett Alvarez, watching and on TV, of course, your meetings, the last few meetings that you've had concerning helping our local businesses, and I thought I'd come and watch it live for change. Certainly want to support our small businesses. And so you, I think, have struggled with this issue, but just give you some insight. This is another opportunity for the city to take a strategic position on economic development. It's unfortunate it's under these circumstances. However, think about it as we try to turn a page and be more proactive in our economic development efforts going forward. Think about the businesses that you're targeting. They're the ones that generate the sales tax, and we then have the privilege of collecting and using it for the purpose of economic development, among other things. We need to help these retail businesses right now. Think about prior to the virus, last year, including first quarter this year, how many businesses were closing in Victoria? Now, there's been a few that have opened, too. Drive around town and do an inventory of the empty buildings. Look at the impact after we closed down all the game rooms. How many empty buildings again are we seeing? But not just the game rooms, but there's a number of other retailers and businesses all over town that businesses are closed prior to the virus. So we're seeing an economic downturn. I think your financial director has already given you a projection of losses and sales tax and jobs. I don't know where we're at on the unemployment chart. We've lost a lot of oil fuel. So what are we going to do? We're always talking about economic development. And I've sat with some of you up there on that dice, and we don't hesitate to pass a tax abatement. Don't even question it. That's an economic development tool. So consider it in that light, that this is another economic development tool. It's a little bit more complicated, but I think you're making it way, way too complicated. I see other communities around us that have loan programs, grant programs. I'd rather us be the leader in economic development for this region and not a follower. So hopefully tonight, in your discussions, deliberations, y'all will find a path to helping our small businesses. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Alvarez. Next, I have a card from Dennis Patillo.
Well, in a lot of respects, Emmett Alvarez stole my comments, which is good. That's a good thing. I'm Dennis Patillo, Levitt 802 West Power. We are in incredibly difficult times, as everybody knows. I've spent the last five days working with suppliers to try to get an understanding of what business is going to be like in the restaurant industry over the next three or four months. And we're having to do things in the restaurant industry that we would have never contemplated doing even three months ago. The certainty is that we are going to have to spend a lot more money. Our costs are going to be much, much higher in all realms. Availability of product is going to be sketchy. And it's a very, very difficult time for any business. The pump house, knock on wood, is going to be fine. But as I look around, the things that I see in the future, and I hope I'm wrong, PPE lasts for eight weeks. You've got people that have to spend that money within an eight-week period of time, and there's a lot of unknowns. We don't know the extent of the public appetite to come back. I've talked to some businesses that the 25% occupancy isn't a concern because they're not getting 25% occupancy to begin with, and others that are doing better. But the facts of the matter are, we just don't know. When I moved to Victoria in 2004, I was impressed then, and I am impressed today, by the city's commitment to the economic vitality of this community in many, many different forms, whether it be a contribution to Victoria Economic Development Corporation, whether it be the Retail Coach, whether it be tax abatements. This community has led the way always in economic development. My concern, my greatest concern, is that we may not be framing economic development in the right terms for these days. It may not be job creation or businesses coming in. It may be company preservation. And I recognize that a lot of small businesses struggle in the good times with capitalization, and they're excluded in large part from the banking, traditional banking industry. So while, three months ago, if I were standing here, I would have said with absolute certainty in my heart that the role of the city is not to take care of individual businesses, even if it's a small fraction of businesses. But I've changed my mind. I'm deeply concerned, not for the businesses that are not reopening now. I'm concerned for the businesses that will close after the eight weeks of PPE, failing something. Until we get a real handle on what consumer demand is, I hope that we can figure out something to do for these people. I'm not here to espouse any particular program. I'm just asking for you to consider doing something, and sooner is better than later. I do recognize the concerns with the possibility of an ongoing fund, but I am one who believes that the effects of COVID-19 are going to extend well beyond the effect of the actual infections. We don't know where we are. I was so heartened last week when I listened to your debate, because this, something this council does uniquely. Y'all take a subject apart, you think about it, you're cautious with the money, and you debated policy issues. The only thing I would ask is that to rethink that and really try to do something for these small businesses. We need to keep people employed, and we need to keep small businesses going. You're the ones that get paid the big bucks to make the decision on how we do that, and I thank you for it.
Thank you, Mr. Patillo.
Mayor, members of council, thank you. My name is Lee Keeling, 112 Spokane. I've spoken to you before, obviously, about this matter, and I've been in several debates about it in the last several weeks. I appreciate the comments that you've heard so far. They pretty much mirror mine, and I've given you my thoughts on why it's important to, why I believe it's important that we come up with some way of trying to help our local small businesses weather this increasingly uncertain storm. And so I thank them for showing up today and speaking to you about that, and I'm not going to try to dig back into that. I'd like to more directly address your debate and your policy choices that, as I see it, are in front of you all to make tonight. And I just want to try to, there were some things that have frankly concerned me about the debate that I wanted to try my best to clear up. First off is that the menu of choices that you have looks to me like begins with whether or not you're okay with this use of public money to benefit private business. And, you know, I think that's a question that reasonable minds can certainly differ on. It is unusual. I think these are unusual times, and I think it's time to rethink what the normal view of that kind of relationship may be. But that's, that is certainly one reason that you could be convinced this is not a good thing to do. And if so, then I think it would be great just to put it that way in those stark terms, and let's just say it's just not appropriate, let's don't do it. However, I don't think, and if you think that way, I'm probably not going to be able to convince you, and neither are any of the other people that are going to speak, but if you get past that point, it looks to me like the choices that come before us look a little more clear. We could, we can approach this thing from the standpoint of making some sort of grant money available. That's what a lot of places have done. Chiefly, the reason for doing it is, you know, you could do it. You're in control of it. You may think the outlay may be less, but I think it was pointed out in pretty important terms last week that the grants, first of all, the people that spoke, the small business people that spoke to you last week, said they didn't want a grant. They just want some credit. They want some business credit to help them weather the storm. So they don't want a handout, number one. If you made handouts, the amounts that you're going to be able to give are going to be smaller, and thus they're going to be maybe enough to pay part of the rent. They're not going to be as effective as a well-considered loan, some business credit that is made available by someone who knows how to extend credit to businesses. And that kind of moves me to my second point, which is the other way to do it. If you're not going to do grants, and I think grants are clearly the inferior choice. If you're going to make loans, I think you have to confront first the fact that you've got two choices. You can, you can do it yourself, and that includes hiring someone to do it for you, or you can give the money, you can make a grant, a donation, write a check. It is gone, it is not your money anymore, but you have given it to an organization that is a professional organization, providing business credit to exactly the kind of people we're talking about. We have some leeway with what those underwriting criteria are, and we can, we have some ability to tailor that to the people we want to try to meet, but we're going to let them do their job. They are the ones who know how to make, how to evaluate a business and decide, for example, well, I can give you a loan for this, but that's not going to be enough for you to make it. You're going to need to do something else. And in that situation, I'm not going to give you the loan if it's a lost cause. You have that ability, and that's why the city manager brought you, I think, the LIFT Fund idea to begin with. They are professionals, they do this for a living. They're going to be doing it with their own money. They're not going to be doing it with our money. The argument last time about the Dream Fund and bringing in something that didn't have the Dream Fund, it really misses the point. What you're doing with the LIFT Fund is making a restricted gift to them. You're writing them a check. It's their money once you write the check. We no longer have any risk of anything. We have given up $750,000. For that, they'll agree to make $680,000 worth of loans at very, very favorable rates available to people in our community to get through the COVID crisis. Now, they offered an additional, we could, they could, they would be happy to leave it at that, and if we'd left it at that, at the end of the three years, that restriction would go away, and whatever's left of the money that we gave them would become part of their general funds. They'd be able to use it to reloan it out to other businesses throughout their entire regional area. But they came back with a different idea, and they said, if you want us to, we will continue the restriction and make those loans available in your community only to small businesses and give you, and partner with you on things you want to try to incentivize and things you want to, you want to try to make happen in your community. So when we kind of turned the corner a week ago and started talking about, well, really, maybe the goal here was to get the Dream Fund all along, that misses the mark in my mind. That's not what happened at all. We'd be foolish, it looks like to me, to say no to the Dream Fund, given that all that is, is a continued restriction on our funds that we have given them. We're making a restricted gift to somebody who knows what they're doing with their own money. I think that's the most effective way to help small businesses in our community, rather than giving them a grant, and certainly more so than us trying to hire and make these loans ourselves for our own portfolio. I saw it suggested on some Facebook posts that perhaps Jesus and his two assistant city managers would become the loan officers, and maybe you guys would be the loan committee. I'm sure that's not what you really want to do. But the main point is, even if you find somebody else who has the skill set that LIFT Fund brings to the table, they're not going to go out and invest your money and run that program, invent that program, create it, operate it, administer it for anything like what LIFT Fund's going to do it for. I'm out of time, but I really do thank you for your attention again today, and I certainly look forward to tonight's debate, and hopefully we're going to get something constructive done. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Keeling. Is there anyone else that wants to speak to council tonight? Hearing no one, we'll move on into our work session. I think when we left our previous work session, the message I got was we were going to look at some options. One, perhaps a loan program through another CDFI, a grant program, or as Ms. Scott indicated, nothing. So those are the kind of the three choices that we have tonight, and that's what I think we've tried to bring to the table tonight to, once again, see if there's a way that we can agree upon to help our small businesses in Victoria. So with that, do you have the slides explained?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
All right. So I'll turn it over to our city manager for the slides on the options that will be before us tonight, and then we'll have our discussion.
Okay, great. Thank you, mayor and council. As the mayor alluded to at our last work session, there was very specific direction to bring forward several options, one of which would be a loan program with a different CDFI, which is called People Fund, and then also a grant program that would incorporate a collaboration with some of our other partners, such as the Chamber of EDC and VSTDC. I had a chance to send some of that information to you all over the weekend, and it has also been included in your binder for tonight, as well as a few other documents that I'll reference as part of the overview presentation. Okay, so the first option that I'm going to run through is People Fund. But before I get to that, recall that at the last work session, I verbalized that originally, when we first were looking at, just trying to figure out who are the CDFI partners in our community, recall that we received some of that guidance from SBDC, and the major player in town was LIFT Fund, and the minor player was People Fund. And so People Fund is very similar to LIFT Fund, and so I know that you all have done your own research, and we've provided information on LIFT Fund, so I won't spend too much time specific on People Fund, because it's literally extremely similar to LIFT Fund. And as a refresher, it's a community development finance institution, CDFI, and they, in general, focus on offering small business loans, as well as business assistance and education to underserved communities. This specific map for People Fund kind of shows you where they have offices, and so you see on there Houston, Dallas, Austin, down in the valley. At the last meeting, Councilmember Loughran mentioned that in his own research, he found that People Fund predominantly serviced North Texas, Central Texas, and they do have a stronghold in North Texas, but they are kind of spread out all throughout. They do offer programs to clients all across the state, and so as you could see by this, the way that they've decided to split their regions, we actually happen to fall in the South Texas region, and so we would be out of their offices in the valley. As part of this research, leading up to the work session at the last meeting, I provided several examples to you as to what other communities have done. Recall that the original reflection that we went through as staff happened in mid-March, and so we're already approaching almost two months since that initial reflection. And then at that time, from mid-March to end of March, LIFT Fund was the entity that was partnering, sort of flood out of the gates, right? They were partnering with San Antonio, Corpus, El Paso, et cetera. Eventually, as some more communities started developing, we did notice that People Fund started partnering with a couple of different communities for similar but different type of programs. And so I put out two, I put two cities up there, one Fort Worth, because it's a large one, and I emphasized the Local Development Corporation, because technically that relationship is with the Development Corporation in Fort Worth and not the City of Fort Worth. But in that specific relationship that they have in Fort Worth, they did a 50/50 financial split of the money that goes into a capital loan fund, and I know that one of the items that was discussed with council was finding a partner that would bring money to the table. And so when we got exposed to this partnership that they have with the City of Fort Worth, that stood out to us, because they did exactly that. They brought some money to the table. Collectively, with the Development Corporation, that initial capital loan fund was at an amount of about $850,000, with the opportunity to double if that gets utilized. That framework for the Fort Worth agreement is very similar to the framework that I'll walk through here in a second. Different framework that they also provide is similar to what they have with the City of Pleasanton. So for instance, City of Pleasanton, very small community, there, the City of Pleasanton partnered with them simply for interest buydown. And so in the Pleasanton case, all of the capital for lending is coming from People Fund, and the only sort of financial commitment that Pleasanton brought forward was simply to buy down the interest, because ultimately, that's what was creating sort of that appealing, you know, zero interest or very minimal interest piece. And this is what CDFIs do all across the state. And so I mentioned early on that when we were looking at, for instance, when LIFT Fund was partnering with Corpus, how they've had a relationship with Corpus for almost 15 years, it's because it's not uncommon for EDCs, cities, et cetera, to enter into these types of agreements with CDFIs to buy down interest for the benefit of the community. And so that's sort of the type of relationship that they have with Pleasanton. One of the items that was brought up during y'all's conversation as well was finding, specific to loan, was finding a way to assist more businesses. I know that Councilmember De La Garza had verbalized trying to find a way to assist more businesses, and so we focused sort of what we have in front of you for today's discussion on the Fort Worth model, because with the additional contribution that People Fund would bring to the table, we would be able to help more businesses.
Garza, do you have any idea what the City of Pleasanton investment was?
So it was very minimal, and so their program was only a couple hundred thousand dollars, and so their investment was, I believe, $20,000 to $30,000, just for a very minimal small interest buydown on a small, very small program. And I forgot to mention, too, that in your binder, we included a tab that has a whole PowerPoint presentation from People Fund with more background information on them, which you'll see is very consistent and similar to what LIFT Fund provides. Both People Fund and LIFT Fund actually stem from the same entity that once was called Axiom Texas. And so if you see the correlation between both entities being around since 1994, it's because they were, they both grew out of what was Axiom Texas, which was the micro lending organization that was founded in 1994. And there's also a few articles, and they're related to the work that People Fund is doing. Specific to us, you may recall that the original recommendation was to invest $750,000, and so that's how we approached it with People Fund. We said, you know, we have up to $750,000. What would a program similar to Fort Worth's look like with that amount? And the numbers that they came up with ended up technically totaling $748,000. But in this model, what they're suggesting is receiving $143,000 for interest buydown for 0% for the first six months only. And that amount also secures a cap of 5% for the life of the loan. They're also, as part of the agreement, would receive $55,000 to go towards a loan loss reserve to cover a portion of their losses. And so, and I'll get to that, I have a whole other separate slide on the loan loss fund and how that would work. And then $550,000 would go towards loan capital, and that's the piece that would be matched by People Fund for a total loan capital fund of $1.1 million. There's differences between what you've seen before and what this program has to offer. You may recall that as part of the educational exercise at the last meeting, we also verbalized that these entities, from a micro lending standpoint, typically focus on loans, $50,000 or less. And so the way that they structure their programs with communities are to give that opportunity for at least some to be able to go up to close to the $50,000. And so the way this was structured was to allow recipients to apply for loans up to $50,000, however, mandating or requiring that 75% of the loans issued or of the amounts issued equate to $25,000 or less. And so that would create some opportunity for at least some folks that may need more than $25,000 but less than 50,000 to have that opportunity to do that. Obviously, this is one of the pieces that's very different. In their program, the loans do accrue interest beginning in the seventh month, and they have term options that go all the way up to 78 months. I know that in some conversations that I had, not only with some of you, but even some of our stakeholders, there was some questions, you know, surrounding terms being very quick and a business's ability to be able to pay off, you know, a $25,000 loan, you know, in three years. And so this, this program creates the opportunity for longer term, and pros and cons with that, obviously.
But if you talk, or in my conversations with some bankers, going past that three-year period, default rates rise exponentially. So the recommendation from the bankers I spoke to were, don't go past three years.
Maybe. And I don't know what the private bankers would look like. You know, similar to LIFT Fund, People Fund has their own track record of what their default rate is, and they acknowledge that it might be a little different during these situations, and I think everybody would acknowledge that there's a big question mark surrounding that. But they also have their default rates below the 10%, roughly around 5%, which is consistent.
But is our potential loss limited to that fund at 55,000?
I'll get to that in a slide when I get. So part of the eligibility and criteria is part of this overarching program, you know, very similar, has to be a business that's inside the city limits. Obviously, there's some underwriting criteria that People Fund has that may or might not be exactly the same as LIFT Fund, you know? They obviously have, they've been doing this for a long time, and so they have their mechanisms to determine the likelihood that a business will be able to repay that loan. They do require that the applicants have, would have applied or have applied for federal assistance prior to applying for this program. This accomplishes a couple of things. One, it shows that the business meets other requirements, too. But the second, if you think about it, it creates an opportunity to create more sustainability for the business if this program is supplemented with something else. And so a business is more likely to succeed if they're getting assistance from multiple different sources. And that's got pros and cons to it as well, but this is the way that they've decided to approach it. And also, keep in mind that even though businesses apply for these programs, sometimes they don't know if they're actually going to receive the funding or not, or there may be some time before they even figure that out. And so that's one way to kind of ensure that you're checking multiple boxes. And there's, and they very specifically had contract in their, in. And there's, and they very specifically had contract in their, in language in their contract already that related to taxes, which I know had been brought, brought up before. And that was consistent with the agreement that they had with Fort, Fort Worth as well. This is a very similar slide that I've had the last two work sessions, just providing some, some glimpse as to the types of businesses that might apply for this type of loan. And so I won't necessarily take a deep dive into it. But as you all know, there's businesses that are having to restart up. And some were impacted more than others, depending on whether they were essential or non-essential. And I know for a fact some places are opening back up because I got a haircut today. This is the slide on, on the loan loss reserve details. And each loan is issued at, at a 50/50 ratio. And so recall that People Fund would, would contribute 550,000 dollars into the fund. And so if we run a scenario and say that somebody received a 15,000 dollar loan, 25,000 dollars of that 50 would come from the city's pot and 25,000 dollars would come from the People Fund's pot. The 10% that would go into a loan loss reserve is intended to cover losses from the People's Fund portion. And so for instance, in that example there, if let's say a 15,000 dollar loan has 25,000 dollar losses, half of that would be covered by the city. And People Fund would cover 10,000 with 25 coming from the 55,000 that we set aside. If that makes any sense.
That's not what the agreement says.
That was, it's confusing, I'll give you that.
There was some, some confusion in the early draft that was circulated this weekend. We've cleared that up in the draft that's in your notebook today. You're right, I read it differently myself the first time I read it. And we, we had further discussions with People Fund and clarified. And this is the way the new version of the contract is drafted.
And that is the way that they have their agreement set up with Fort Worth as well. And so in essence, ultimately, part of their responsibilities, and I'll get to the term part because it'll be easier transition. But one of the biggest differences with this setup is twofold. One, it does not require an establishment of a permanent revolving fund. And when the contract terminates, they do return the money to the city minus any losses that would have been occurred or taken up over that time period.
Is there any consideration for the fact that some of those loans may not have fully matured yet? Because-
Yeah, absolutely.
2025 is not the end of the seven-year period.
Right, absolutely. And they, they would continue to serve those loans past that. Or even worst-case scenario, if we were to get to a point, there's a clause in there where either party can terminate the agreement within 30 days, they would continue to serve those loans that are already in repayment stages, if you will. And so we also included some language too, that would create like a payment schedule for us, I think quarterly. Where they would pay us that amount quarterly as they receive them for our portion.
After the termination?
Correct.
After termination.
Whether it's a natural termination or whether it's a forced termination. And they've got some very specific reporting elements in the agreement as well. Whoops, which is part of their responsibilities. And as the mayor mentioned at the last workshop, or might have been two workshops ago, one of the benefits of, of a CDFI is that unlike a tradit, traditional lending institution, they also provide a lot of coaching and a lot of technical assistance. And so that's very much included in the agreement and very much part of who they are, just how Live Fund is. And so you'll notice that also if you get a chance to go through the PowerPoint about the services that they offer in general. That's sort of the ba, the generic, high-level summary of, of that agreement. Happy to entertain any questions as best we can related to this topic? Or if mayor, if you want to have a discussion on this option first, before I go through a few slides on the grant option, it's up to you.
Well, let's, let's see the, the grant options well, then we can come back and talk each option. I think our memories are good enough to be able to do that.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
You said at the beginning of the presentation that these are the only two options we're going to have. So Live Fund is completely off the table?
Well, that's up to you, right? I mean, council voted against the Live Fund proposal. So as far as I'm concerned, that's off the table. And so if it were to be back on the table, that would need to come from council, not from me.
I would like to have it brought back up so we at least have the three options. Thank you.
Point of order, Robert's rules does not allow that to come back up, does it?
It does. It's called a motion to rescind. I can't hear myself, so I don't know if my microphone's working or not. It's called a motion to rescind. And yes, it can be brought back up at a subsequent meeting on motion of any party, whether they voted in favor or against it in the past. And that, that motion would need a supermajority to pass because we did not provide notice ahead of this meeting that it was a possibility that it could come up. But then it would simply be a matter of, of someone making a motion to, to bring that item back up and us voting on that motion. And then we all already have, you know, copies of that resolution and that agreement. It could simply be approved tonight.
My understanding is it would have to have been last meeting, not this meeting.
If I may, can we just go through the rest of the presentations? And then we'll discuss that as a continuation of a, really a work session, so.
The second option that-
I'd like this to have us all know what everything looks like.
The other option that we put some thought into was a grant program. With this specific program, the city would be the main administrator or facilitator of the program. And so it would not require us entering into any comprehensive agreement with any third-party entity because we would keep the funds. However, we do want to include our partners in the evaluation process. And really, maybe evaluation isn't the proper term for it. But the reality is that there is going to be a lot of labor time involved with reviewing the documents that get submitted from potential recipients. And so this committee would be the labor of love that would go behind reviewing all of that information to ensure that it's acceptable to what we're expecting. The program that was presented to you or that was provided to you would offer grants up to 10,000 dollars. I think it's, it's, it was made very evident through the conversation at the last work session that grant programs typically are lower amounts. And so that was part of the reasoning for, for that. I will say though, however, that the specific grant program that we try to mirror our structure behind was the city of Live Oaks. And in their specific grant program, actually that grant program allowed for grants up to 25,000 dollars. But that was a rarity. Most, based on what you all saw and what I shared with you at the last meeting, were 5,000, 10,000. And so we're recommending 10,000 for, for a grant program. Use has been a big topic of discussion. And so we want to make sure that the grant program can be utilized for a variety of different items. And so we, very specifically in the grant application and packet included this verbiage that it could be utilized for overhead operations to include payroll, rent, short-term uses of cash for business operations and utilities or inventory of raw material that might be needed as part of a startup effort. Some of the eligibility and criteria would be that the business, of course, be locally owned, have fewer than 50 full-time employees, that they would show proof that their revenue has declined due to COVID-19. Their, their business must be a physical and publicly, publicly accessible location. And so you'll see in a future slide, there's an exclusion on home-based businesses. But it's important that we support businesses that we know for a fact, you know, are highly trafficked, they're visible and play a role in, in, in our economy. And similar to what would be consistent with loans, it's important that the businesses have a track record. And so with the grant program specifically, must have been in continuous operation for six months prior to applying for the grant and must be up to date on taxes as well. Exclusions, sexually-oriented businesses, nightclubs, bars, home-based businesses and nonprofit organizations, that what we specifically excluded. Based on the conversations that we have had, the entire, at least what I've taken away is the entire purpose of the program is to help some of the smaller businesses, whether they're restaurants or some of the non-essential businesses. And so we wanted to make, and provide some parameters so that the recipients be businesses that we feel are, are more, I guess, appropriate for this type of program. Oops. Low there. Okay, some of the responsibilities. We noticed in reviewing some of these grant programs that some of them had a requirement for this business to stay open for a certain amount of time. It was the way that communities were getting some sort of guarantee for something in exchange. So there were, there were several grant programs that, that we saw that didn't have any sort of clawback, if you will, from the businesses. That it was kind of just, you receive that X amount, if you make it, great, if you don't, whatever. And so some grant programs though were more specific with saying, no, if you're going to receive some funds from us, we want a guarantee from you that you're going to stay open for X amount of months. And so we kind of went back and forth and thought, okay, if somebody's going to get 10,000 dollars, realistically, how far can that go? And so that, that was a reasoning for three months. And that was actually in the Live Oak version, which is the framework that we took our structure from, theirs was a three-month minimum as well. One of the things that we added on our own, based on conversation at the last work, work session, was this requirement to partner with the SBDC. And in our conversations with Lindsay at the SBDC, this is actually something that they've done in the past with other communities. And so she said that the way that they, I guess, prove that is that they provide a letter to whomever the grantor is, right? Which in this case would be the city, affirming that that business is going through a program of theirs. One of the things that we added into ours that was a lesson learned from Lindsay's case and their experience with other communities is putting a time cap on that. And so in our specific case, the grantee would need to formalize that relationship with the SBDC prior to 30 days after receiving the grant. And so that would hopefully ensure that, that continues through the three months that we would require them to stay open. And ultimately, the recipient would have to provide documentation to the city demonstrating that the expenses or the money was utilized for an allowable expense. There's some language at the very end of the application packet that the applicant would sign that in essence affirms that if they don't meet any of this criteria, that they actually would have to repay the, the money back to us. And that, of course, can be a touchy subject, right? Because if a business goes out of business, you know, where are they going to get the money to pay us back? But nevertheless, it provides some form of teeth to a grant program where otherwise, there would be nothing. Review process, I mentioned earlier about the establishment of a review committee, which really would be a labor of love to help review all the applications to ensure that they meet the criteria that we described, such as the declining revenues, they're up to date with taxes, you know, et cetera, et cetera. And that committee would be made up of representatives from the different entities that I verbalized earlier. The program, the way that it was set up in Live Oak, which is the framework that we took it from, was a first-come, first-served basis program. And so it places a lot of emphasis on, of course, education so that businesses can be quick to apply for the grant program. They don't have this option in Live Oak because it's actually through their EDC. But based on the conversation here, I know Councilman Bucknight requested that the recommendations come to council. And so that's what we incorporated in the grant program. And that's what's included in the timeline as well. And so the proposed timeline, should we go towards this grant program? I listed May 20th as the application period, you know, not really knowing, is this something that's going to get support tonight? Or maybe it's going to get the support at the next council meeting, which would be the 19th? And so I picked May 20th to kind of give us two council meetings, assuming that we went the grant program option. And it said, okay, well, we'll open it up through the end of the month, beginning May 20th. That would give us some days to figure out, you know, how we would communicate to the public, work with our partners to get some communication, you know, set up. May 30th would, would begin the review of applicants. And I would suggest having a special city council meeting on June 9th so that council could be the final approver of those recommendations, if you will. And then that, hopefully by the end of that week, finance can coordinate and start issuing some of those checks out to the recipients. And so hopefully, going the grant option by mid-June, we're beginning to see the recipients already receiving some cash. It's a pretty straightforward program. And so that's really all that I have on the framework for that. But I'm happy to answer any questions related to that or, or just in general, get any feedback.
Let me ask you something. Sometimes you have like a mechanic that's working out of a shop, either next to his house or in his house, it's still in his yard, that wouldn't qualify? Does this consider it a home base?
Probably not. I mean, we would have to look at those nuances, right? I mean, one of the things that we didn't consider, I'm not going to throw out the word. But in other communities, you know, they have certain regulatory tools that don't allow for that situation that you just described. And so they don't, I guess, have to worry about that scenario.
Okay.
So we, we would have to just look at how we want, we would want to apply that here. But that's a great question. Quite frankly, I had not thought of that. So thank you for, for bringing that up.
Because you also have beauty shops.
We would have to clearly define, you know, what, what that means.
Yeah, okay.
I have a lot of questions on the logistics and the points. But is that copied from Live Oak? Or was that just done to put something on the table to talk about the, what the information is that you were supposed to provide in order to apply for the grant? And then the possible points?
So the framework of the application packet was taken from Live Oak. But we applied some of our own sort of items, such as the requirement for SBDC or it coming to council. But the overall framework of the eligibility, of the requirement information, that scoring table that you saw in the application packet, that was part of the, the setup that was part of Live Oak. Part of our review included, and I got to give credit where credit is due, and I don't know if Dale's here, but Dale really helped us with a lot of research on what other communities are doing as it relates to grant programs. I think you probably have already seen that in other communities, it's actually EDCs that are either financially contributing or more directly involved with these types of programs. And so through his network, he was able to more quickly and easily gather samples of applications from across the state. And so we reviewed a lot of those. Many of them were very one-pagers and we didn't really like that because it really wasn't a lot of information. And so through the, the reviewing of the different options that Dale brought forward to our conversation, we landed on liking the structure of Live Oak because it's got some, some teeth to it with requiring something from the recipient. And it actually made very clear the process. And it was very clear as to, okay, if you meet that, you get that many points. If you get, meet that, you get that many points. So it was a little bit more, I guess, direct and more black and white than some of the others that we saw.
Mayor, if we could talk about that one, I've got a lot of suggestions and other ideas.
Well, if, if I may, can I start a discussion about the loan program to begin with? I personally think that that's a, a better way to go because we're going to engage a true financial institution to deal with the money that we're putting up. The way I see it, we're going to leverage about 200,000 dollars to provide a 1.1 million dollar loan pool. That 200,000 dollars is going to be for interest buydowns and then there's a risk pool involved there. So, you know, we would stand to, at the end of the day, perhaps risk or lose that much, but we're willing to consider a loan pro, I mean, a grant program where we're just giving away 250,000 dollars. And when we, when we try to manage these things locally, you get all the groups together, but I think there's a lot of, of personalities involved in that that would have to be dealt with, who we give the money to. And I'm really concerned about the amount of money that we, we give in a grant. If it's only five, 10,000 dollars at a time. I mean, sometimes you don't need a Band-Aid, you need a tourniquet. And if we just provide a Band-Aid when people are, are bleeding, that's not enough. And all you do is prolong the inevitable. Well, I think if you have a well-managed loan program, that hopefully, and I'm not going to sit here and say that some won't succeed, but I think we give them a far better chance of succession, of succeeding if we do give them a loan and, and they are coached and, and helped along by these people who are trained to do this and have been doing it for quite some time. So for me, in terms of, of that, we, we've eliminated the issue of creating a permanent fund. And, and we've brought more money to the table by someone who's willing to put up their money upfront. Not a promise to do so, but is willing to put it upfront. And I just think that if we went into it, I've looked at the contract, I've made a few suggestions, minor things, and, and I think the terms and conditions for, for terminating was one of the things that I mentioned to Mr. Gouche about it. But we, we're going to get monthly reports from it. But we're going to get monthly reports from it. We can monitor it. We'll see what the fund is doing. And there's plenty of safeguards. We have an out with a 30-day notice to out. And as long as we have those terms and conditions, I think our risk is pretty well minimized if the program doesn't go as we would like to see it go. But I think Mr. Patello kind of hit it on the head, and I worry about it too, is how long is this situation going to last? The trouble is, we don't know. We don't know how long it's going to last. And I think we should prepare ourselves to help preserve as many of the businesses in our community as we can and give them really, really substantial help. Because if we lose them, we've got to replace them to just get back to where we are today. And we all know what a struggle that is. And so I think you begin by preserving what we've got and then looking at what we can do to expand. We routinely offer incentives larger than this to other types of businesses and tax abatements, other 380 agreements and stuff to instill. But I think we need to kind of pull in a little bit, protect what we've got, so that we've got, then we can preserve it and then still be in a position to move forward on helping to increase business as well. I don't think it's a good thing to sit here as a community in despair. I don't, I don't think that's a wise thing for us to do, just because we're uncertain about the future. I think we need to set a positive attitude for our community, and I think this would be a wonderful way to do it, to reinvest in our businesses and our community. And I think it's all about attitude. If we start cowering and being afraid to take a few risks, then that attitude is going to permeate our entire community, and then we're going to all fall into the doldrums. So I think we should fight back. We should give our businesses a chance to survive. And I think the best way to do that is to put that money in the hands of people who do this for a living and are professionals at it. So that would be my comment on the loan versus the grant. And so that's my two cents worth.
I got a question concerning the grant program. Our initial investment is going to be $250,000?
That was a recommended, and I might have, I probably didn't mention that when I was going through my presentation, but yes, that was just the recommended amount. I kind of heard loud and clear at the last work session that if we went a grant route, that it'd be a lesser amount. And so that's what I came up with.
What would keep it, what would keep us from coming up with a higher amount? Say $500,000.
Well, that, I mean, that's your discretion on how much money you would want to put towards the program.
Okay, also the $10,000 grant program, is that the maximum amount? Or could that be $15,000 or $20,000, or is that up to us again?
We could increase it, but I would then review some of the things that we're expecting businesses to do, right? So for example, if we increase the amount, I'm just going to make up a number, 20,000, then maybe we increase the requirement that they stay open from three months to four months or five, you know, it might not be as easy as just times two. But I think there is opportunities there for sure.
And on the People Fund, you specifically said it's $750,000 that the city would give, our part.
Correct, total.
And who came up with that amount, or could it be lower? Could it be 500,000?
Sure. Well, that amount came from, if you recall, all of this stemmed from a conversation that we had with the Victoria Self-Stacks Development Corporation. And that initial conversation was trying to get a sense of, from them, if they would be willing to support a parks project if we were to spend this money on some program, right? And so that discussion with them was about, was on the $750,000 amount. And so that's where that number comes from. I don't think, I think any amount above $750,000, we'd have to go back to Self-Stacks Development Corporation. I would feel that that'd be the appropriate thing to do.
What about below? So if we gave $500,000 to the People Fund, they would match it, so we would have a million dollars to give a small business in Victoria, correct?
We could lower it, but it, no, but keep in mind that from the 748,000, they're only matching 550, because there's an amount that's going towards interest buy down and an amount that's going towards a loan loss reserve. So if that total contribution is 500, you would then have to deduct what the interest buy down is for that amount. And I don't know what it would be off the top of my head. I assume it'd be proportional to what it is now. And so that would lower the match that they would bring, right? And so just quick math in my head, that would probably put the loan capital fund at around $350,000 or so. In between 300 and 350, we'd put their match at that same amount, which would create a loan capital fund of
700,000.
Around 650 to 700,000.
Well, right now it's 1.1 million.
Correct.
So we could leverage.
Okay, my questions are, on the grant, you're going to grant the money without them having any type of consultation or any time until after they get the money. I like the fact that the People Fund, you get your, the SBA or, you know, the Small Business Development Center at the University of Houston, get involved first, and they will offer these people some consultations, so they can figure out, okay, did I ask for enough? Did I not ask for enough? Did I ask for too much? And they'll have guidance before they even get, you know, this money or these loans. Whereas if you grant it and then ask them to, you know, come in and get some consultations, I think it's better off that they do it before. That's why I like the People Fund better. And I had not really gone through the whole presentation until you just, you know, I didn't read all my packet. I read most of it, but I didn't go through the details. So I like the idea that they will be matching and will have a bigger pot to pull from. So that means we'll be able to help more people, and they will have the, you know, the people that are experienced in, you know, helping them with the SBA. And they can do some, I mean, make decisions based on facts and not just assumptions. And I think people need that help right now, because they're very vulnerable. And right now they're thinking, oh, well, just give me the money and I'll do what I can with it, instead of thinking, okay, I need this, this, and this. And then, you know, they'll lose out because they didn't think about it, or nobody guided them. So I like the People Fund. And, you know, I hadn't really compared it, now that I think about it, you'll be able to help more people in the long run.
If I may, Mr. Gouche, there are no origination fees in these People Fund loans, correct?
No, that hasn't, that didn't come up at all.
I don't see it anywhere in the documents.
And I didn't see that in the Fort Worth agreement that we saw.
And I know that was a big issue for you, Mr. Bucknight.
Yeah. But, you know, but in this setup with People Fund, they are charging an interest rate for the duration of the loan.
Well, it says up to 5%, so.
Which means it'll be 5%.
But no more than that.
Following on what our citizens.
It beats a credit card loan for these people, I can tell you that.
So following on what our citizens got up here and spoke to us about today, talked about economic development and how this was such an economic development part. What in these two proposals ties these businesses that are applying to prove any type of economic development?
I don't.
Bible.
So quickly on the loan program. So I think, I think there's a philosophical conversation that, or educational opportunity that we ought to probably embark on, regardless of what happens, you know, tonight or with COVID-19 relief programs. Because quite frankly, small businesses and the role that they play in our economic development is, I don't want to use the word understood, but in economic development, there is a sense of the role that small businesses play in your ecosystem because of the jobs that they create, the sense of community, identity that they provide. I had a conversation, for instance, with, I think, some of you after one of the work sessions where, you know, if we think about some of the businesses that make Victoria Victoria, they're small businesses, right? Fassadis, it makes our downtown, right? And so these small businesses have value to our community that's hard to quantify. And I realize that quantifying it is important and is a factor. And so if you recall, when we went through the People Fund exercise, Steve Niven, who is a very renowned economist based out of San Antonio, he suggests that for every investment in small business, it returns $14 on that investment. And so it's hard to quantify, but if you think of it from those terms, it's not something that we necessarily see in exchange to us directly, but it's something that we might see in exchange indirectly. And we see it happening with larger investments. And so, for instance, but they're also hard to quantify. You know, I've had plenty of spirited discussions with Dale, for instance, about the impact of Caterpillar and how I think sometimes we ought to take more credit for some of the ripple effect of that. But if we think about some of the things that happened in that part of town after Caterpillar happened, you know, does Walmart go in that part of town if Caterpillar isn't there? Do the Hawthorne Apartments get built in that part of town if Caterpillar isn't in that part of town? You know, maybe, maybe not. And so oftentimes, when we're talking about economic development and supporting businesses, it's not that specific, what do you get in return? But it's, what is the secondary or tertiary impact of that? You know, think of probably the large abatement that's getting close to wrap up, right, which is the Caterpillar one, right? The only thing they were tasked to do was to create a certain amount of jobs, right? That's it, right? Because we all understood that having that number of jobs was going to have an impact on the rest of the ecosystem in our community. There wasn't specifics about going into the weeds of some of those jobs. There wasn't conversations on, you know, a percentage of this or that. I mean, there was, there's an understanding that creating jobs has value, but so does retaining jobs. And so I think the opportunity here, and one of the things that's become very evident, I think, in this whole conversation is that I think there are opportunities for us to become more educated as a community on just the impact that small businesses play directly or indirectly, because they're hard to quantify. And I know you want a quantifying answer, but the best I can come up with is what Steve Niven came up with in San Antonio, and I would encourage you to do your research on Steve Niven. He is an excellent economist, economist, I don't even, I'm blanking out. But when he says that investment in small business returns $14 for that investment, we take it as fact. And so that's the benefit that we get from investing in small businesses. Specifically, with the grant program, we would hopefully get that reassurance that that business stays open for three months. And three months might not seem like a lot, but if we have $10,000 loans at $250,000 contribution, that's 25 businesses, and if each of those businesses has five employees, right? That's over 100 jobs that we're ensuring stay active for another three months. And these are people that are trying to shop at the mall, you know, and just doing different things. And so I'm rambling now.
What if it's another option, we took the same amount of money and gave it as an employee stipend? Why wouldn't that ripple through the economy?
It absolutely would.
Provide customers to businesses.
Yeah, it absolutely would. The difference, though, is that while, and if that's what you're suggesting, I'll take that in a heartbeat.
It's just another option that I thought of.
For our employees. And I'm happy to exclude, by the way, high-level executives with the organization if we did that. But, huh?
It doesn't keep on giving.
But our city employees have a job, right? And so there's value in us trying to do what we can, right? And there's no guarantees, and that's the risk factor, right? In somebody keeping their job, right? If we want to talk about impacts, ripple effects in the economy, if we provide a one-time pay bump to our employees, absolutely it's going to have a ripple effect, because they might go spend that on something. But they still have their jobs, right? Their jobs weren't at jeopardy. But if in exchange for that same amount, we can retain 200, 250, 300 jobs, God knows how many, well, that's probably going to have a greater impact, because that's recurring money that that person is receiving by keeping that job.
It saves to the core of your community. I mean, small business is the core of any community. When I visit some of the places that, that a lot of people like to visit, when I visit those places, I'm not going to McDonald's or some company. I'm going to the local people that have really nice restaurants in their downtowns and things that's unique and different. And I try to, and you end up gravitating to these unique businesses that are in these communities when people go to visit them. So there is a value in keeping the core of your business community alive. And they seem like small businesses, like I said, you save one business that generates $100,000 a year. You do 30 of them, that's $3 million of activity in our community, and that's with no multiplier. That's no multiplier added on to any of that. So I think it's key to create an atmosphere that we can preserve what Victoria is and build upon that for what we want Victoria to become. Economic development is a complex thing. It's not made up of one thing or the other. There's primary jobs, there's retail, and unless you're actively trying to go after all of it at one time, if you spend too much time on one and not the other, it just doesn't ever, ever mesh. And the thing about a loan program, it's a loan. We stand to get back, hopefully, much of what we put into it at the end of the day and at the same time have preserved our businesses. That's the way I look at it, is if we're going to be real stewards of the taxpayers' money. And I think that the Lift, I mean, the People Fund, who has lenders, that's what they do. They're not going to be too, because they've got a little skin in the game too, that they can lose if they don't make wise loans. And so I think the handholding and helping a business, I would envision it when somebody comes in and wants to borrow so much money, that they're going to go through an exercise to see if it's a viable option for this business. I don't think they're just going to give them the money to make the loan, because if they fail in the loan, they stand to lose money too from what they've put up. So again, for about around $200,000, we can leverage 1.1 million in capital to be loaned. If we give away $200,000, we've just given away $200,000 and hope for the best. And with no real trust that it's going to be used here. And if you just give people a stipend, we don't know where they're going to spend it. They could spend it, they could drive to, for a big weekend in Las Vegas. We don't know what they're going to do to it, with it. So that's why I think that if we're going to do anything, we need to strongly look at the loan option. And we talked about possibly 30-something loans. If we have a 1.1 million pool, that's going to jump up somewhere in the neighborhood, 40, maybe 50 companies. And just because we say 25,000, that doesn't mean that some of them may be given a loan for 15,000, 20,000. That's what we're going to entrust to the People Fund, because that's their business. They are a financial institution that deals with these types of loans. And so to me, if we're going to, I think there's less risk to our taxpayers in entering into a program such as that. And we don't create the permanent fund. And it's like you pointed out, when you looked at the master plan last week, that the permanent fund was intended to be a public-private partnership. You know, maybe we revisit that at another time in another setting to set something up like that. If that's what we all agree in our Self-Stacks Development Corporation, if that's a viable economic tool. Right now, as you gentlemen pointed out last week, we need to deal with COVID. And we need to deal with helping our businesses get through with that, and I'm fine with that, quite frankly. I have no problem with that. But I think we need to do something to help our community. And to me, when you can literally put up $200,000 and leverage a loan fund of 1.1 million. a, a loan fund of one point one million dollars. That's a pretty substantial deal in my mind. And I think there's enough safeguards built into the contract. We can have it audited. These companies, and correct me if I'm wrong. I think these CDFIs are routinely audited. They have to give audit reports to, to the Treasury Department or whoever it is that oversees them. So you can even go in and, and check their audit records like that. So there's a lot of safeguards built into the program that I don't think are built in necessarily to a grant program. And somebody's gonna have to manage that grant. So we're gonna be taking away time of, of somebody that, that arguably could be doing better things. Because we're gonna have a lot of work to do in this community in the next coming months. If we're gonna get through this. And I think we're up to the task and I, I know we're gonna have hard work to do. And, and I'm, I'm willing to put in the hours it takes to do it. And, but I think if we could start off by helping our, our, our businesses to literally survive, that's what we're talking about, is having these businesses survive. And I'm gonna sit here and say every one of them is. But I know one thing, if we do nothing, we're gonna lose more of them than we're gonna save. And so I, I just believe in giving them the, the best fighting chance we can offer them.
Mayor, just to add really quick, to expand on, on Councilman Bucknight's question.
Getting help from the back.
Yeah, that's right, that's right, yeah. That's why they're here, man. That's, that's why he's a certified economic developer, right? So Dale, I just spoke to him briefly. And so one, one of the things too, that, that's important to connect the dots. And so thank you Dale for, for reminding me of it is the connection that primary jobs actually has to some of these small businesses. Because primary jobs, of course, are always kinda seen as the jobs that can create income for people to spend in your community. And so if, if we have these small businesses for the primary job holders to spend their money on, it keeps that money in town. And so I know that, for instance, some of you have seen the, the leakage reports that the Retail Coach provides of how much money people spend on items outside of our community elsewhere. For whatever reason. And so part of the importance of protecting our small businesses is that it ensures that it at least creates an opportunity for the primary job holders to spend those monies in our community. And as we see small businesses decrease, it might increase that leakage. If, for whatever reason, some of these folks decide to spend their money elsewhere because of a particular business that they would frequent that no longer exists. And so there is that nuance to it too. So thank you Dale.
Well, as of last Friday, there was still a hundred and twenty five billion dollars available in the PPP. Which is a program that's federal dollars, not local dollars. That is for employees and for self-employed individuals who do qualify. I think there was something said here that people that are self-employed don't qualify. That is not true. They absolutely qualify. It's also for rent and for mortgage and for utilities. That's available. The SBA has loans, there's the EIDL, I think it is, that's a loan that can be used for other purposes. Ten thousand forgivable right up front. Those loans are still available also.
That one's closed except for agriculture. Except for agricultural related. They opened that back up in the second round, but they're looking at doing it again. But that's just the grant.
And with our luck, it'll happen next Tuesday.
If I understood some comments that I heard Mr. Zajak make. Yeah, technically it's available, but you still have to put a score sheet of how you're gonna use that money if you don't have a lot of employees. And by the time it gets down to the, to the actual scoring, you score very low in the, in the, in the pecking order. And, and you do have to use those things to preserve jobs. You can't, the PPE funds. And they're not available as broadly as, as this is. And I go back again to and ask the question. Why do we always look to the federal government to bail us out? When we apparently have the opportunity to do so? Because I can guarantee you, every dollar that they send down here is borrowed. And it, it's gonna be borrowed and it's gonna go against the national debt that we're having trouble paying off now. And so I don't, I don't, I worry about that as well. And, and I've always been one, I'm a very conservative person and I've always talked to you, you know, you take care of yourself when you can. And we have an opportunity as a community to step forward, get money in our, in our citizens' hands. And you know, if, if, and part of the, and part of the requirement of this, and Scott, I believe is what I read. They have to apply, had to apply for these federal programs to begin with. Did I read that correctly, Mr. Guish? So that's one of the criteria before they get a loan. So in, in other words, they have to.
That's a criteria in both of these programs, they have to apply. I don't quite understand, and Mr. Garza addressed it a little bit, that the more income they have or the more different sources, the better. But in both of these programs, they have to apply. Okay, here's my application, I get a checkmark. I mean, I don't, I don't quite get what difference it made whether they applied or not in these programs. It's just sort of, one of the issues with I have, there's a lot of just random stuff in here. I'll just throw this one out as well, on our grant deal. And I don't like the point system, but you get thirty points for turning in all your information at the application time. But we have the opportunity to ask for other stuff. Which would mean you didn't turn it all in. I mean, that, that, and I know that's not what we were intending, but that's just kind of the arbitrary, arbitrary thing. But.
And that's why I'm not really in favor of a grant program. Because with the people fund, we're putting it in the hands of professionals who are, have, or, or a financial institution that is trained at doing this. And they also are putting some of their money at risk. So I think they're gonna do a much better job vetting these recipients than we can do.
And I understand that that's your opinion, Mr. Mayor.
And I'm just giving my opinion.
It's not my opinion and I'm talking now.
All right.
Okay, thank you for that. In the people fund, if we're gonna talk about that one. Well, and I guess I have the same question Mr. Garza has, but I come from a different direction. Last week, city manager asked for some direction from council of some numbers that we were comfortable with. I've listened to both of these past meetings in the last twenty four hours. The only numbers that I heard spoken last week were a hundred and thirty five thousand from Dr. Young, that the mayor quickly bumped up to two hundred thousand. Those were the only numbers that I heard. Now, several weeks ago, we were presented with seven hundred and fifty thousand and we had some discussion about that. But I don't know where we suddenly now we're looking at two hundred and fifty versus five hundred and, and they're very convenient. That, you know, yes, you can say, well, it's the same investment either way, but some of it we get back. So that's part of why I asked about Pleasanton and the buy down. Because that might be something where we can leverage our money, but still get the loan program, but it not be the seven hundred and fifty thousand investment. So that's something else to throw on the table. And we were going to have two different, initially, we were gonna have two different programs that were similar to compare. But in the conversation, that got thrown to the side and now we just have the lift fund versus the grant.
People fund.
I'm sorry, people fund, people fund versus the grant. You know, I'm perhaps open to looking at lift fund and people fund again, which we can't do apparently tonight. Yes, well, if we have enough people. And I guess my last comments for right now are specifically in the people fund grant. People fund application. There's some, some requirements on the applicants. Not having, having relative issues on credit and things like that. But there's no, no comment about any type of a criminal history. And it seems to me that I'm gonna have trouble looking my constituents in the eye if I've given money that can be given to maybe somebody that's got a felony within the last three years. Maybe we could put some type of limitation on that. That's just one of the little picky things that I had in the people fund. I guess I won't talk about the grant fund at this point because we're talking about the people fund.
Well, it's either one. And I, and I, and I apologize if I interrupted you.
Okay, that's fine. Okay, so on the grant. I think I prefer it. Although I prefer it to come from money other than city council. And I prefer it in terms of if my choices are this or that. If my choices are this, that, or, or nothing. I'm still having trouble getting away from nothing. But if we're gonna do a grant, I think we should look at the length of time that somebody's been in business. And I don't, I'm not convinced that six months is good. I think we should look at a business that's established. And so give them more credit for a longer period of time. I think we need to have a minimum annual income of receipts. The mayor keeps talking about if somebody has a hundred thousand of receipts. Using that as an example, but I think that's good. I, I do agree with the upper cap that we used to have, but it's sort of disappeared of a million. But I'd like to see receipts of a hundred twenty thousand. If we're looking at a ten thousand dollar grant, maybe they should at least have ten thousand of income on average. I, I think that the fact that they are in Victoria, those were great concepts. I really like that, that they have to be in Victoria and they have to show us a lease or a mortgage that they're in Victoria. But I think that goes without saying, I think you don't even get into the pot to be looked at if you're not already in Victoria, owned by somebody in Victoria. I don't think that's a forty percent deal. I think you don't even get into the pot if you, or you don't even get into the criteria. I think that perhaps we could put some more emphasis on a business that's downtown. Perhaps we could put more emphasis on a business that's minority owned. I also think we could put more emphasis on the businesses that are, according to everything I've read, the ones that are hurt the hardest by this. We don't really have an airline in town, we don't have a bus line in town. But we have hotels, hotels, we have locally owned hotels. Because I also agree, I think that it should be somebody that's occupies. It's a business that's owned by somebody that's in Victoria, not a, not a chain. But we do, I think hotels would fit into that. We have some local restaurants that would fit. The oil and gas industry has been impacted. Now, is that COVID related or not COVID related? Okay, so that would be one to exclude, perhaps. I think perhaps medical is another one that has been hit by it. But some places I've seen have excluded professions. I, and I think that's maybe a good idea. Medical, dental, attorney, accountant. But those are just some thoughts. And so I would, I like the idea of the rating system, but I wouldn't use the rating system that's been provided to us. And I would throw all those things out for discussion.
So Dr. Young and I spoke last week kind of brainstormed on what a grant proposal would look like if he and I were putting it together. And that's what I passed out to each of y'all this evening. And it kinda goes along with what was brought up last week, I think, where we started, you know, one million or less in sales for the company. I still feel like we ought to be looking at sales tax revenue. So why not write it up as a three eighty agreement where we rebate a quarter of their previous years sales tax remitted to the city of Victoria? Up to a maximum of five thousand dollars. And I stuck with that five thousand dollars because I took the information that Mr. Garza gave us on other grants from the city of Georgetown, Cedar Park and Flugerville, that was page two. Shows you their property tax and sales tax collections and their general fund budgets. And theirs grants were around five thousand. Their totals might have been a little higher. For Georgetown and Cedar Park, they're definitely lower in Flugerville. City put up half the money in Georgetown and in Cedar Park, it was all city money of two hundred thousand. Cedar Park had the closest probably general fund budget that we did. Our tax rate's point six one one five, theirs is point four four seven zero though. So there's, there's some discrepancies there, there's some differences. Other criteria that we, we had talked about is must have ten or few, ten or fewer full-time employees. And I took some of the items that Mr. Garza had presented and put those in there as well. Twenty five percent decline in sales or in revenue directly attributable to COVID nineteen. Have some exclusions in there, much like the grant program that was previously presented. And you're also excluded if you've already received SBA funding or BPP funding. We're trying to hit those businesses that are having a hard time getting that funding. But you would have to have applied and been, been denied for some particular reason. You can use it on personnel, rent, mortgage interest, utilities. And I took also remain open for a period of three months, like that. Formalized relationship with the Small Business Development Center. And then required documentation. Mine's, ours is heavy on documentation. I wanna make sure you're legitimate, you're, you're doing what you need to do as a business to operate legally. State sales tax filings, that's gonna determine what your, your grant's gonna be if it's a quarter of the past twelve months. Business formation documents, lease, mortgage or other documentation as a proof of lease or mortgage. Past four quarters of your nine forty ones, your nine forty. This is nothing that's very difficult for any business to gather because you should save all these records anyway if you ever have an audit. Your insurance company's gonna come in and ask for this anyway.
And I think one of the benefits of having people apply, having, having applied to some of these other programs is that they would have already gone through the exercise of gathering some of this information. And so I think part of that requirement, Councilwoman Scott, is, is that it facilitates it for them because they've already, you know, started gathering some of this information. So that might be another benefit of that.
But they should already have, I mean.
I, I, I understand. But we all know, some are better than others at it.
Businesses aren't that sophisticated. And, and if you're gonna rebate taxes, why not have a loan and get their tax, sales tax? Didn't you say you were gonna give a rebate on their sales tax?
Three eighty agreement for.
But if we loan them the money, we're gonna collect their sales tax. Out of their business.
And we're gonna get the money back.
And we're gonna get the money back.
So I'm looking at it from.
We're gonna get sales tax.
Look at it from, I'm still looking at it from an economic standpoint, right?
So am I.
So half a million dollar business is gonna have, I don't know, a hundred thousand in payroll, maybe?
What business you're in?
Well, I mean, just look at what sales tax, if you were a hundred percent and you collected on a million dollars. What's one point five percent of a million dollars? Fifteen thousand dollars?
What about some of the guys that?
That's for a full year, that's your entire economic impact for this, to the fund that is gonna provide money to you.
If you loan them the money.
I'm not for the loan.
You get the money back. And you get the sales tax. If you give them the grant and give them a sales tax rebate, you're just giving them money away.
The loan, loan, I think we're doing, I mean, a hundred thousand dollars, but it's a one-to-one program match with individuals and businesses. So if individuals and businesses contribute fifty thousand, the city contributes fifty thousand, the whole thing's a hundred. If individuals and businesses do a hundred, it's a two hundred thousand dollar. But that's the same amount of money that the city was coming forward and paying the original proposal with lift fund. And that's where the hundred thousand dollars was at. If we do the loan amount, we're gonna lose over two hundred thousand dollars. Or we're gonna pay over two hundred thousand dollars.
And so you're, you want a program that's gonna do a hundred thousand dollars in grants? And so you're, you want a program that's going to do a hundred thousand dollars in grants?
It could do two hundred, depends on if individuals and businesses contribute. Could do twenty if only.
But then that's all gone. You're just giving it away.
To me, this isn't an economic development issue. And that's where I'm, I'm more of not doing anything. This is something that I could do something with, but I don't think it's an economic development issue because there's no sales tax revenue coming in from these small businesses that pay for the entire program.
It isn't just.
Employees, their employees buy things.
It isn't just sales tax, okay? They, it's the jobs they create. We saw a presentation by Verdonity that talked about, that showed revenue per acre on a dense, on a, on a strip with small businesses compared to a big box. Where was the, which made more money? What, what's going to populate downtown? Is it going to be big businesses or are we going to wait for them to, little businesses to fall out of the sky? It is an economic development issue. You and I just disagree on it.
Yes, I think we do. I mean, you know, and we had business people get up before us and speak and said, we were barely holding our head above water before COVID nineteen, and now we're really in trouble. Do I want to loan money to people that are barely holding their head above water? That they're barely making it, now they're going to put a loan on top of their back?
You, you handed out. You handed it out at the last meeting.
Just because I think this is emotional, it's not economic.
You handed this out at the last meeting. Okay? And one of the sentences says, "A negative economy has little effect on a given business's survival." This is a little bit more drastic and I agree with that, okay? But even when the recession, when the hurricane happened, when these loan funds didn't have any bigger default rates than they had regularly.
So you'll read that sentence again?
"A negative economy has little effect on a given business's survival."
So what are we talking about?
That specific, that specific document didn't come up at the last work session. But if it would have, my comment on that document is that, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, Councilman Bucknight, but my understanding of that document and the source is that that's intended to represent a statistic of businesses when they start up. Not businesses trying to make it through a disaster.
I don't have it with me, so.
Because everybody knows that when somebody starts a business, some make it, some don't. And so that document and that statistic was attempting to showcase that the, the economy itself doesn't necessarily have a major factor on whether a business survives. But it's not during a disaster. During a disaster, the, the only statistic that we have as it relates to disasters comes from TIDIM. Some of you may or may not have been part of the presentation that Randy Vivian gave at a Tuesday morning meeting, talking about what TIDIM saw post Harvey. And what they saw was that twenty-five percent of the businesses that were impacted by Harvey did not make it back. This is obviously completely different because it's not a hurricane, right? But my point is that in that scenario, that was based off of a percentage off of a disaster, some type of crisis. And this isn't a type of crisis that we've seen before. And so we have to take every number with a grain of salt to a certain extent. Because we don't really know. And that's the hard part to, to quantify. But to that specific document, I think it was referring to.
No, it wasn't.
The likelihood of, of business survival.
No, it's looking at how a business survives based on the age of the business and whether or not an economic impact occurrence, bad downturn economy or whatever, has an effect whether it is a new business or an old business. It says it doesn't matter. It doesn't affect it. It's showing that as the age goes from zero to fifteen years and looking at different points or, you know, if the business started in nineteen ninety-five or two thousand or, or two thousand five, two thousand ten, that it didn't matter on the age of the business that bad economic times do not affect small businesses' survival. That's from the Small Business Administration.
Right. I just interpret it differently and that's, and that's okay.
To, to kind of get over one, one impasse here, if, if, if everybody would like. I sense there's a, there's a probably an urgency simply to do nothing. So if, if I make it, I have a show of hands of those who, who would choose not to do anything. So there's three out of us that would not to do anything. So I think we'll continue a discussion about what we might want to do then, is, in moving forward. So is there any more discussion on the, on the issue of, of the loan versus a grant from anybody?
Could I ask a question? If, if the majority feels they want to do something, could we quantify it? Could we maybe start talking about what dollar amount we're talking about? Maybe that would help with the discussion about.
Or. Or if I make a suggestion for sake of continuing the discussion, if we already have a sense that the majority of council want to do something, we just don't know what. Well, then maybe the conversation would shift to, from the ones that do want to do something, grant versus loan, and then kind of just stare tip, stare, step it into whatever direction comes, right? Because clearly we need to, for purposes of having a productive discussion and hopefully, you know, not being here till nine or ten, right? It's important that we hear from everybody so that we as staff have an understanding of what, what to do or what not to do.
We know the mayor wants a loan, so we just need to hear from the other three.
I said the loan too.
I would like the loan too, it makes more sense.
I would like the, the, the People Fund.
Okay, so that's the loan.
Okay. So we could agree on the People Fund.
So that's what we're talking about then, or?
So.
Or we're talking about a loan.
Well, I think four of us prefer the loan. And I would still open it up to discussion about the loan. If, if we can find a way to, to, to move forward.
Dr. Yang, did you have a question?
Yeah, well, I was going to say, from a loan standpoint and from the People's Fund, let's, it's seven hundred and fifty thousand. Have we discussed with any of our other governmental partners to be partners with that? Be it the county, seeing as that they collect sales tax?
I mentioned something previous and at the time they weren't ready.
So we have to go with a loan?
Yes, and, and really it's an issue for them to deal with because they're dealing with the county. We're dealing with people inside the city of Victoria.
However, no, we are, we are county citizens. I pay county taxes. So does everybody here that lives in the city? You do too.
And, and I have no qualms in doing what we need to do and then going and having a discussion with the county.
Do we know what percentage of their sales tax revenues are garnered from within the city limits? These are just points that I, I think that are germane and pertinent to this.
But, but we're, we're talking about here, the way this.
Yeah, it has to be a high percentage.
It's over ninety percent, I think.
Yes. I, I looked it up one time because I had a discussion with, in fact, I had to get information from the county. But it was about, it was about eighty percent came from the city. But this was a long time ago, too.
I would like to point out that part of this loan, they have to have an address in Victoria. So they are required to do that.
Of course, everybody, the county and the city, I mean, we're getting reports from our management about the, the federal money that's coming to us because of our losses. And I'm sure that this county is getting the same type of reports on their losses. And so, you know, you said they didn't have an appetite at the time. It'd be great if they would partner with us, but.
Two thumbs in a hole stops that leak a lot faster than one.
Right. We could wait till they come to the table.
What was that announcement for, from the state? It's fifty-five dollars a head for municipalities or counties less than five hundred thousand?
That was simply just a figure that they calculated totaling the.
That was going to be the first round, it said.
Yeah, that's been circulating for a while. At our next council meeting, actually, at next Tuesday, there'll be some items to discuss some of the grants that staff is pursuing that is part of this money that's funneling down. One of the items on next week's council meeting is also amending the consolidated plan, which is the plan that needs to approve how we spend our CDBG dollars. And so you may recall that through this CARES Act, we received about three hundred and fifty thousand dollars from that. And so in order to spend it, we need to amend the plan and that's on Tuesday. And so some more information continues to trickle down on that front.
And that, that money, though, the fifty-five dollars a head, the way I understood it, it's not just, here's three point six million for your sixty-seven thousand residents. And your government, you had specific payroll cost out of that, that same type of stuff that you're keeping track of, right?
Yeah, and, and there's a lot of.
I don't think we're going to reach.
Well, and, and the reality is that they're.
Three point six.
It, it's all program specific, right? And so some programs we might be eligible for, some we're not. And so it's, it's complicated.
I sent the, I said in on a.
We're trying to stay on top of that as, as best we can and be honest with you.
Well, can I?
It's very complicated.
Can I ask another question then? Of the, the four of you, it's a two-part question and Mr. Garza, you're a part of it. On the four of you, do you have a dollar amount in mind? Is it seven hundred and fifty? Is it five hundred? Is it two fifty? Is it six million? What number do you have in mind?
Seven fifty because that was originally agreed by the Sales Tax Development Corporation.
And would lift, would either a lift fund or People Fund do a lesser number?
I believe so.
Okay, any idea of what range of lesser number they might do?
Haven't had that specific conversation, but seeing what they've done in other communities, I, I don't see any specific reason why they wouldn't entertain a smaller amount.
Okay.
What, what did you ask, what did you estimate on their formula? That if we, if we put in, say, five hundred thousand, what were your estimates of the?
Oh, we didn't do the specific math. I don't think.
I thought somebody did earlier.
But if, if the desire of council is for us to pursue a specific five hundred thousand dollar amount instead of the seven fifty, we can certainly get the specific information from them.
But then we wouldn't reach a decision, decision tonight. And we're trying to get that because we put, putting it off, putting it off.
Right.
We're not going to give this money to the people until July or August.
I'm okay with the seven fifty, but we're going to have to run it by the Sales Tax Corporation. The whole agreement was on the lift fund originally. They meet on Monday, I'm sure they can okay it.
There was no.
But really, correct.
There was no formal agreement.
So VSTDC did not.
That's true, there was no formal.
VSTDC did not take formal action. The conversation with VSTDC was centered more around consensus around funding a park project next year. And so, because we had this conversation. Because we, we battled with, you know, did we need to have a VSTDC meeting, you know, even prior to today, quite frankly? But because VSTDC, VSTDC wasn't a formal action, what we took as the intent and we confirmed with the president of VSTDC and the majority of, of the members that are in our council, just trying to get a sense of, you know, would you be open to these different options? And we didn't really hear much opposition to that, but.
Well, I'm, I, I would like to call a vote on the People Fund as it's.
That wouldn't occur now during the work session?
In the, in the rest of the work session.
After the work session.
So, so there's.
I'd like to see the numbers on five hundred thousand dollar.
Well, we don't have those right now.
Is it, is it possible to have a brief recess and get them on the phone? I don't know whether they're aware of our meeting.
They are. And I can certainly attempt to do that.
Well, to that end, could we, could we move down to the city manager's report? And if you want to try to make an attempt to, to contact them?
Sure, we can do that if you like.
Is there anybody to object to that? Is that amenable to everybody?
That'll be fine. Give them a second because I think the majority of that crew is in the, oh, you're there. But I think the majority of that crew, I think, is in the other building. But yeah, we can, we can go right into the CIP.
So we'll have two, two types of numbers to compare to, even if they're not to the exact number, just a order of magnitude.
Yeah. And for today's city manager's report, a discussion on CIP, Mike Aten, Assistant City Manager, will spearhead that conversation. And so as people trickle in from the other, from the other building, he'll kind of kick it off.
Thank you, Jesus, and good evening, mayor and council. So today, we're going to provide you a brief update on the status of the capital improvement plan, better known as CIP. So presenting with me today is, will be Gilbert Reyna, our finance director, and Ken Gill, our city engineer and public works director. So to start off, I guess the question is, what is a CIP or capital improvement plan? So in essence, CIP is one of the most important responsibilities of local government. It's a working blueprint that details how the city will finance, sustain, and improve its infrastructure and core assets. So when we talk about infrastructure, we mean streets, drainage, and so on. When we talk about the core assets, we are referring to our facilities, our parks, and so forth. The CIP also contains one, some of the individual projects, as well as equipment purchases and major studies such as the Parks Master Plan. We have the Downtown Master Plan, the Fiscal Sustainability Plan. I failed to mention that the CIP is a five-year plan, right? And it's updated annually. So why is the CIP essential? So the CIP is essential to the city's future economic viability. We talked very often about the need to promote more economic development in the city and the CIP will serve that function. The CIP is essential to the financial health of the organization, also essential to the quality of life of the community. The CIP is also a key implementation tool of the 2035 Comprehensive Plan. As you know, the 2035 Plan was adopted back in 2016 and it serves as, as a guide for development and redevelopment of the city for the next twenty years. So the comp plan has specific goals, objectives, and strategies to improve quality of life and the CIP plays a critical role in that regard. Again, the CIP is a five-year plan that we update every year. However, this year, because of the impact of COVID nineteen, staff is proposing or recommending to postpone presentation of the CIP to 2021. So at this time, I would like to ask Gilbert to talk to us about the postponement of the, the CIP.
Okay, Mike. There was a couple of things before that you want to also hit on, if you would like to talk about where we've been. Okay, let me, which one is it? This one? Look at that, I'm mechanical here. Before I get to that point, I want to bring some background to council, which a majority of y'all are fully aware of it. Since nineteen ninety-nine, we have spent over five hundred million dollars investing and replacing and improving various different type of infrastructure. Of course, mainly, majority of those have been streets and utility system. With that, as you well know, in selecting the streets, which is one of the flaws, I believe, is that we've been doing on a non-scientific study on it. It's like, okay, we go in there, that looks pretty good. Oh, that looks like an eight, that's like a ten, that's a twenty, whatever the case might be. And also, we don't consider long-term maintenance and effect of, of construction effect when we do these selections. You know, as you're fully aware, we have engaged, we've got the paper and data company that they're going in there right now, kind of scanning the, the land surface, find out a little more in depth, get some data as to what are we dealing with on these streets and type of category. So will we play it out in the CIP program? We know which streets are really, should be the number one. We know which streets are really, should be the number one, number two, number three, which is critical. And second of all, we know, and as you well know, we're limited on resources, on dollars, how we do these streets. So we want to kind of capitalize on the, the big back for the buck here and get these streets early so they don't cause a huge effect down the road. So we don't, we need to do a better job, and we have plans for that. Also, as you were, the prior C I P that had was been done, it was kind of complaint drab, and hey, let's go do that, because we got a lot of problems going on there. So, and lastly, on this, where we've been, it's like, you know, our current C I P program, I don't need to be preaching to y'all, because I think a lot of all y'all know this, is that it lacks a lot of input. You know, I I guess I've been sitting here quiet and not saying nothing over the years, but it does lack input. Now, from the public purposes, on some certain aspects of this C I P plan, but on council, especially on council, it's not your fault. It's staff's fault for not involving you from the beginning. What I mean by that is that it'd be nice to have a council engage from the beginning, from how the C I P program was developed. What's makes the nut and bolts of it? What makes the criteria? What makes the decision? What, how these projects are filtered in and gets to the top before you sit here a year later and say, okay, these are the part, pick, and you know how that goes. Uh, let's go this way. It'd be nice to have all that process involvement throughout the year and have engagement on a quarterly basis, monthly basis, whatever, and reporting basis, where you know for a fact what you're dealing with, you you're not hit cold, it's okay, what kind of project it is, you know about the process, you know what's involved, you know the selections, you know who's selecting, you know how the projects are evaluated. It'd be nice to have all that information beforehand, before you make a selection, and that's just education. That's bad on us, not y'all, it's us. And last, and second of all, as I, as you well know, majority of all C I P were strictly streets, use hoodies, that's all you saw up here. Maybe once in a while you get a park built in here, but that's about it. But, you know, there's a lot of departments that have other needs too as well. And, you know, as later on, as Mike's gonna talk about, there's a lot of master plan studies also that can be, need to be rolled up into the C I P program with a comprehensive plan. And that has a lot of, you know, different things other than streets and utilities. And Mike hit this on the nail last time. Our C I P lacks any connectivity to the twenty thirty five comprehensive plan. It doesn't, I mean, we get up there and say, oh, we need to do the street, well, how's that tied to this whole plan? I I look, just we need to do the street right now. So i- it's, it's, uh, you know, where we've been, we did some good things, don't get me wrong. But it'd be nice to move forward in the future, we have some mechanics, some straightforward processes, and we understand the whole thing. And it's really a robust type of C I P that includes everything within that. Now, with that said, um, what Mike said about, usually during May, we're up here giving you a recommendation, not me, usually Donald's up here, remember that? But in this case, we're asking, staff is asking, we're all to respect, if we can postpone this for one year, until next year, we'll come back in May twenty twenty one. And there's three basic reasons for that, I'm gonna give a couple of them, Ken's gonna get up here and talk a little more, and Mike's gonna give you the third one. But basically, as a first, we had this COVID nineteen. No doubt, everybody knows it does have an effect on the local economy. Yes, excuse me. Some businesses were opening up, we were, and and citizens were able to come out. But as you well know, as any economist or any person would know, the confidence of the consumer is going to take a long time to get to that level again. Because the economy is driven by consumer spending, as you well know. Without that confidence there, it's gonna take a long time. How long? Year, two years, who knows, or could be three years? It all depends. A lot of economists talking about a, a V shape. You know, Wesley and I were just kicking things around, we thinking about Nike shape, you know, kind of like a, almost a U deal on the bottom, but it's gonna take a while. To make things worse is that, you know, before COVID nineteen, oil and gas was, everybody thought was pretty good, and guess what? It bottomed out. This whole demand supply thing just blew up on them. We got more gas on it and oil, got storage problems. So it's gonna be a while for Victoria, and unfortunately, we have defersed ourselves from, from the oil and gas, but it's gonna take a little long time. This COVID nineteen is not gonna recession, it's not like any other recession, we can talk about recession, there's recession that. I like to have recession right now, as everybody's known it, I project, in my numbers, I expected a recession. Hell, I didn't expect the COVID nineteen recession. But recession is like, at least you have some type of economy, you got some economics, you got to spill, you know, you got to ban supply, but lower level, less cash out there, you know? But, you know, this thing is, it's gonna take a while, we're gonna have some effect in the twenty twenty budget, that's what we've been talking about lately. We're gonna see in twenty twenty one, there's some credit, you know, we can come up with some things, how to get things around, going for another year. And of course, hopefully, I hope it doesn't happen, but we could see in twenty twenty two as well, it's gonna take some time, folks. I don't have a magical ball on this, and it's gonna take some time. So bear with us on that. So in order to um, to mitigate that, back to the timeframe delay, that's not right? That's not right? That's right. That's not right. We should think cash, cash is king in investments, that's all, you know, back in my old days, you know? Cash is on the side when you got recession is king, same logic here on the city, we need to protect our reserves, our fund balance. Usually, they're, they're drawn down every time we do some implementation of C I P. I'm not saying we shouldn't do a C I P, just that, let's take a step back, let's secure that cash, let's see how this thing plans out. By doing that, it gives us a better position to look at it another year from now, and at least we know where we stand. I hate to go right now, start throwing money out, not throwing money, but spending money, and I said, and a year later, man, we should have hold off, you know? So, well, that's one of the main, main reasons, is number one, why I'm asking y'all, maybe we can push it off for another year, kind of regroup. Second reason for this, we have a large volumes of projects right now that are in progress, are waiting to be bid, or will we be bid by the end of this year? And not only that, we got a lot of master plans and studies happening right now that I love to see all that thing happen, completed, where it engages itself in the C I T program. And Ken and I have been talking. We like to just take the C I P and just review it completely. We want to start the process from scratch. We want to develop some key aspect to it, grading point system, have some work sessions with council and say, get some input, get your blessings on, okay, is this okay? And have all these type of plan, comprehensive plans involved in different levels. So we like to present that to you on the coming year, to get something like a gra- grassroots foundation that this is, this is the plan we want to go forward, moving forward. So when, when we get a plan here, we know how it was developed, how it was, went through the process, and how it's here to be voted on. Not only that, you'll be updated on a monthly, quarterly basis. So we have a lot of things in the pipeline that's gonna help us keep that go. With that, Ken, is he here? He's gonna go through a list of various type of project and maintenance, and after that, Mike's gonna kind of wrap it up for us. Thank you. Oh, you want this too? Thank you. I can't work that anymore, go.
If I go backwards, you gotta start over. Evening, members, council, mayor. What I want to do, let's go to the next one. Got it, is this is a Gantt chart that myself, mostly Wesley, helped develop. I thank him for putting a lot of this together and giving me the ideas. What we did is we made it real simple, we put three color items up there. The blue is the design phase of a project. The orange, and you'll note that most every orange section is gonna be the bidding phase, and that's typically a three month process. That goes from bidding, advertising, award, and getting the contract signed. And then the last color is the green, which is the construction. What we've done is we took all the projects that we have, and we, as Gilbert mentioned, we want to show that we do have a lot of things going on right now and through uh twenty one, is we've got a lot of projects. Some of them are maintenance, but if you'll look on the first slide right here, this is the maintenance projects, they're all utility fund. Vast majority of these are gonna be designed in house, uh, bid in house, uh, construction managed through the, through the years. I can go through each one and kind of describe what they are, or we can ask questions, I'll, I'll hit some of the highlights. Uh, number four is the twenty twenty sewer line. That one is, is for instance, I don't know if you remember, we had a major collapse of the sewer line on Airline at Ben Jordan. And what we want to do is fix that sewer line continuing down Airline, trying to do some proactive, catch it before it collapses. That's one of them. Some of the others, again, are are maintenance projects we try to do every year, and we've got some locations. If you've got any questions on this slide, I'll, I'll entertain specifically any of the projects. And otherwise, I'll move on to the next one. This next slide is more of the maintenance projects, there's general fund, out of city money, then there's sales tax. I included the airline road milling overlay portion. We included the, the street portion, which is more of a maintenance aspect, it's not reconstruction, we're milling that road after we put the water line in. So that's why that's in that section. Crack seal project, of course, that's ongoing, we're nearly complete. The seal coat project is, they're planning to start this month, and that will go rather quickly. So we're looking at finishing probably mid to late summer. The, there's a lot of tech stop projects following this, and as you can see, they're, they're large projects. You've got Moody Street, which is overlaying basically Moody Street from Water Street all the way to Sam Houston. No, to the loop, I'm sorry. That's huge, uh, that'll be happening at night, I'm sure Tech Stop's gonna start that pretty soon. But that's a, every night, there'll be milling, overlaying, off the road. Another one is the Navarro median, of course, y'all are aware of that, that's gonna start here soon in June. And then the other one is seventy seven milling overlay, which starts at Broadmoor, which is the entrance going into Sam's, going all the way to the city limits. Next page is Hurricane Harvey, which is a separate fund, F H W A. Just got a call today, the contractor finally received the uh poles and mast arms from the supplier. It's usually now a four month process to get those, and he plans on starting in mid-June and start the installation and repair of those signals and getting up, I know Mike's been after me, getting up those illuminated signs. That's a big part of that project, those all disappeared, or a good portion of them.
You're talking about the street signs?
Yes, ma'am, the ones at the major intersections that have, they're illuminated, the hang down for the mast arms, those. We, we got a bunch of them to put up in, in that project.
Can I just ask a quick question? Why, why is it that some of the lights at the major intersections have a yellow bar like going all the way around? That's something new?
That is something new. There's one, the, are you talking about the one in front of the college on Ben Wilson?
Somewhere around there, I saw one.
That is brand new, we're trying those out, they, they pop, y- I mean, you will see them.
Yes.
Steve, have you noticed them?
Yeah, you know, you're driving, all of a sudden, you see.
Yes.
And it's just a small, you know.
Small circle around it, I noticed them too, and Derek, our traffic manager, he's doing some really innovative things, he looks at things that don't cost a lot of money. But as he travels, it goes to Houston, he says, wow, that's pretty cool, he'll look into it, let's try it, let's see how it works. And then as we get into the replacements and new signals, get with Tech Stop. One of the big, and I, I love this one, is I call them the Christmas tree stop signs. That was a huge innovation, those are great, best things, I, I think one of the neatest things ever, it's very good safety.
I have a question too, I'm just, I'm following everything you're saying, but basically, the, what we're saying is, last year's capital improvements plan that's got a tab for twenty twenty is completely replaced with this. And then next, next May in twenty twenty one, we'll look at working the rest of those twenty twenty programs in along with the twenty twenty ones, but we won't do any adjusting until then.
A lot of the twenty twenty is in, is in these.
A lot of it is.
Sheets, most of, all of them, we're, we're proceeding forward.
Okay.
Twenty one, there is the, I, I, and I'll be honest, the biggest one that we're holding off on is that design phase of all of those. Let, let's pull back on that and take a look at those, but all the other ones, uh, you'll see in this chart as I get further along. You know, the, the rehab overlays, the seal coats, we're still moving forward with those.
Right, it's the designs I've been watching for the last six years.
That we want to hold off and and regroup and look at everything as a C I P again, all the, whether it's fire, P D, let's look at parks, everybody together so that each department's not coming up, hey, I need twenty million, and then parks comes up, I need twenty five million, you're like, wow, which, which one do I like the best? And this way, you get one group, one C I P presented, you, you, you got an idea of what everybody's looking for.
Well, not only that, you also want to have a, you know, from the department's perspective, that's great, but you also want to look from the more, how economic is going to impact the city of Victoria? The quality of life and everything, so all those ingredients also have to be played into this process, not just.
Right.
Which department was left out, that's one of the key elements left off in this whole process.
And funding, and Gilbert will to look into that, is you've got certain areas that can be funded through different, different funding sources.
Right, but you know, that, and this is gonna be weird coming from me, you know, you should consider funding when you evaluate your capital improvement program. You, you should evaluate it for what it is, what do you want to go, where do you, where you need to be at? And let the funding dr- get to it, so don't let the funding drive it, C I P establish it, then we'll figure out the way the funding works, so.
But we're not doing that now.
We're not doing it, you know that.
Well, we, we're in the midst of the, of the street uh.
Assessment.
Study assessment, right? And aren't we going out for a s- uh drainage study?
Yes, we are, we've got the R F Qs out for that right now.
That's one thing that I think has been kind of put on the back burner a long time is drainage. I don't know of a lot of drainage uh, uh, infrastructure improvements that we've done in a very long time, and I would argue with you, the drainage is a single thing that can stop a project faster than anything else.
It, it can, and what we're looking, what, what, what we're looking at on the R F Q, this is kind of getting off topic. But what we're looking at on that is not redoing our entire master drainage plan, because that's, that's a good plan, it's got, it's got a lot of benefit, it's got all the hydraulics, it's got all the hydrology. Is what you're saying is looking at specific areas.
Right.
What are the areas that need some type of ideas for drainage? How can we drain that better so that it's more, it's, it's easier to develop that property? And that's what that master plan, and we're, we're, like I said, we're in the process of getting R F Qs, and they'll be in by end of the month.
And that'll have.
And if I can add to that too.
Huge impact on developing.
Part of, part of that assessment, which we don't need to pay somebody to tell us, is that there are maintenance related items associated with drainage that we can improve upon. You know, there is existing infrastructure out there, and it could be minimal, it could be a simply ditch on the side of the road, it could be simply inlets. You know, are they being cleaned? How often are they being cleaned out? You know, and so there's a lot of maintenance related items associated with drainage that we need to also kind of formalize a game plan. And we don't need to pay somebody to tell us, you know, that we can do a better job at that. But that's part of the equation too.
But the bottom line is we'll have a lot more data.
Right.
To analyze, so we try to make these decisions.
All right, this next slide, this goes into the utility fund, these are the reconstruction projects. What I want to do is highlight the, the projects that we're pushing back, we say a year. And it's the North Heights, number two, the North Heights Utilities Phase Seven, which, and then the North Heights Phase Six Reconstruction on San Antonio. When we say we're pushing it back a year, we typically build, and we design these throughout the year of the fiscal, this fiscal year, and then we bid them in June, July, and get those awarded before the fiscal year's out, which is September. What we're gonna do on these, by saying we're pushing them back a year, is we're gonna push them back till October, November. We're not pushing them back a full year, we're pushing them back just into the next fiscal year. We're still working on a design, we're still doing, we're proceeding, the only thing we're gonna do is bid it maybe a month, two months later. So that I want to make important clear that the people in North Heights, they're not gonna see, oh, my gosh, you just stopped a year, are you coming back? That follows along with the rehab project, uh, which is the continuation of Woodway Phase Three, and then another Bridle Ridge. We're gonna be working in Woodway, Phase One and Two this year, and the first phase of Bridle Ridge. We'll push this into the next year. Again, the citizens will see, as long as they get one and two done, they know three's coming. And that's, that's a key on, key on those projects. Again, North Heights, Phase Seven, which is the last one, push that into the following year, just a couple of months. Again, North Heights Phase Seven, which is the last one, push that into the following year, just a couple of months. And as you've noticed, some of the, the North Heights were underway on several of them and nearing completion on some of the utilities. Did I get the next one? There it is. Okay. Red River Project, I'm going to go through these fairly quick, but give you an update. Red River, they've, as you've noticed, they've installed the base on the south side of the road from Laurent to Navarro. They're moving forward. We're looking at switching traffic end of June to the north, to the, that south side, which will be complete up through the seal. Again, looking at the dates on the project, December to complete all of Red River. Crestwood Phase One, begin pavement work end of June. Looking forward to that. All the utilities are, are complete. And they'll be starting the pavement, curb gutter, driveways, starting at the Ben Jordan and working their way. They're on schedule. We're hoping, again, as they move forward, that concrete company can just keep clicking and we move quicker than the schedule of being next summer. Crestwood Phase Two, we've kind of pushed that back because we don't want to get so much of Crestwood ripped up and under one-way traffic. So we're kind of, what I want to do is push that back to bid it in, once the paving starts in those businesses, Dicks, Dairy Treat, the, the other businesses along there, they can see, they can see actual pavement going down. Once we, I think they see that, we can pull the reins, let's bid the job. It's already designed, we're ready to go. But I don't want to just have Crestwood ripped up from Navarro all the way to Ben Jordan. So kind of timing that back, which plays into the, the COVID and the funding. Some of the other big projects, Placido Benavides, as you well know, still work, all the concrete's down. There's a little section up there by Salem. Contractor has, working on Salem Road, they've got all the pavement cut out. We got them two months to get that road put in, opened up. We are working with the two businesses. And then the next section they'll do, which is the last piece, is re-milling and overlaying and smoothing out that existing section of, we call Placido, from Navarro up to the concrete pavement. And we're expecting that project to wrap up, I would say, August, September, complete, done. Going on, if you've got any questions on any of the others, let's go to the next slide. Stoll Street Realignment, that is the part that's ours. And we're looking at, and we'll give, there's other projects tied to that. And that one, we're, we're working on a design on it now. The next ones are the Parks Projects. Danielle has already gone over that. Azalea Street, which is part of Stoll's realignment. That one, we will award next week. It's at the council meeting. We bid it, awarded it, and we'll have that started in, under construction this summer. Some of the other projects, the Hurricane Harvey River Project, that one, the riverside portion is done. They're working on the pump station and very close to finishing. Hoping the river doesn't go up to slow them down. Moving forward, Ben Wilson, update on that. We just received the 30% summing of the plans, so we'll start reviewing those. Again, we'll meet with the, the same core group that we've met with UHV, City Manager, and go over those plans, make sure we're on track with UHV. At that point, we'll be able to have an assessment of what that pavement is. I know that's still a concern. That's going to be talked about. And they had to get that 30% done to determine when they did, they worked on the drainage. And when they worked on that drainage, they had to cut some of that curb down, cut some of the street down. Well, when they did that, there's not that much pavement left. Well, it left, they couldn't mill and overlay because they took four inches out or six inches. We wanted to make sure that before they really got started on that design and said anything, is where are you with that grade? And once they figured that out, we're, we're moving forward. So 30% in, and we'll be able to discuss and, and make a conclusion on that. That's discussion about are we reconstructing it or is it a mill and overlay? And that's it for my projects and my portion, unless y'all have any other questions.
Thank you, Ken. So Mayor and Council, as you can see, we have a lot of streets and utility projects that we are working on. Now, the postponement of the CIP also gives us an opportunity to complete some of the major plans that we have been working on. And these plans include the street assessment study. So that study is underway. It actually began in January 2020. And it will be completed by June 2020. So staff will come to you and make a presentation sometime in June. So as you know, we have 324 miles of street in the city. And the study will tell us the condition of each street in the city. It will give us a PCI score of zero to 100, which will give us the conditions as well as to which streets to prioritize and how much it will cost. The second study, and I think Councilman Loughgren mentioned it earlier, is the land use fiscal analysis that's being done by Vidony. And you did receive a presentation from Kevin Shepherd several months ago. So that study is underway, began in March, and it should be completed July 2020. And Kevin Shepherd and staff will present the report to you in July. The third study is the downtown master plan. As you know, the comp plan calls for more economic development and also ways to improve quality of life. Specifically for downtown, we are looking, the vision that we have for downtown is to have a vibrant downtown with a mix of housing, retail, restaurants, and a place for people to come and enjoy. So that master plan will begin August 2020 and should end by March 2021. And that plan will have significant amount of public participation. The fourth plan is the Parks and Recreation Master Plan. The last time we updated the Parks Master Plan was in 2012. So it's time to do another update to the plan. And again, this plan will give us, will provide us a vision as to what we want our parks to look like. Because we have a growing community that requires more, more recreational activities. So this master plan will essentially lay up the roadmap for us. So we're looking at starting this plan August 2020, ending February 2021. And this plan will also have significant public participation. Stormwater Master Plan update, we mentioned that earlier. The last time we did the, we did the master plan or the drainage master plan was back in 1999. So this plan is going to essentially analyze the drainage hotspots. The areas that we know we have significant drainage problems. And the consultant will provide us solutions and a cost to address those drainage hotspots. The Thorfare Master Plan is also called for in the Comprehensive Plan. That's Plan 2035. The last time we adopted the Thorfare Master Plan was in 1998. So it is time to update the plan. And of course, this plan will establish the transportation policy direction for the city. And we are looking forward to that. And the plan will begin September 2020, ending June 2021. We're also looking at updating the Unified Development Code or Ordinance. Currently, we are implementing the subdivision ordinance, which is not totally consistent with the state local government code. So the plan is to update that to make sure it's more consistent with the state. Number eight is the citywide facility assessment. The city has never done a facility assessment study, so this will be a first for us. So this study will review and assess all of the city facilities, the city buildings and facilities, and come up with a schedule as to when they will be addressed and how much. And again, the cost will be put into the CIP. Finally, the classification and compensation study. Uh, this study is underway and is being led by our HR Director. And that study began February 2020 and should complete August 2020. So this study essentially will review or is reviewing the job titles and help us find the market rate salary for each position so we can be more competitive in the marketplace. So again, these master plans are already funded. And most of them are called for in the 2035 Comprehensive Plan. So this is my last slide. So where do we want to go? And, and the city manager may want to jump in on this slide. But what we want to, what we want to do, essentially, Mayor and Council, is to change the philosophy from the current streets and utility-focused CIP program. We want to have a more or broader, more inclusive CIP program that includes more than just streets and utilities. We want the CIP to look at our public facilities, our parks and recreation, drainage, technology, a much broader CIP as opposed to just focusing on streets and utilities. So the focus for us will be on improving economic vitality and overall quality of life as called for in the 2035 Comprehensive Plan. We are spending day and night focusing on economic development for the city as well as quality of life and implementing our comp plan. So we plan to be more inclusive in regards to developing the CIP. As Gilbert mentioned earlier, the process has been somewhat secluded. What we want to do is to be more inclusive, involve city council more, involve the departments more, as well as the public. Also, we will have a dedicated staff focused on developing and implementing the CIP. Uh, we currently don't have dedicated staff to it. It's primarily Shepherd in the engineering office and Ken's office. But we want to have a dedicated staff to develop, manage, and report regularly on the CIP program. Are we on schedule? Are we within budget? And we want to hopefully have quarterly updates for city council as to how we are doing in regards to the CIP. That's the end of our presentation, and we would be delighted to answer any questions that you may have. Gilbert and Ken are still here.
Great job, Mike. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Just to expand a little bit on the quarterly update, you may recall that in, thank you, that in December, we had a workshop at the airport where we did a refresher on the 2035 comp plan. And there was a suggestion that was made that we maybe meet as a, as a work session once a quarter. We were supposed to meet in March, but of course, everything kind of changed with COVID. We want to sort of pick that back up again. And so we want to have something this summer to kind of get back into the framework of at least once a quarter, kind of revisiting the 2035 plan. Where do we stand on it? That's, those are the quarterly meetings where we can eventually get updates on CIP so that it's not something that you just hear about once a year. Um, this is something that has to be an ongoing conversation. There's a lot of things that we do. I mean, part of the reason why we wanted to show things on a Gantt chart format was just to show you and hopefully the public how much stuff really is actually going on, right? And that's because we're not even adding, adding anything to it, right? And so we know that there's a lot, a lot of stuff going on, but it's just, are people involved in that process of it going on? Are people informed about it? And so we want to kind of just change the approach to be able to hopefully have a greater impact on what we're already doing by simply just changing our approach. To that end, I, I, I do want to, um, um, thank Mike. You know, Mike came to us with a lot of experience in capital improvements. That was one of his highlights. And, and so he's going to be spearheading some of this effort to us. You heard him allude to the fact that we want to have dedicated staff associated with this. Um, and so in case you're wondering, like, what does that mean? Um, and so, you know, when Ken promoted to City Engineers slash Public Works, it created some capacity and an opportunity to just shift things in the engineering and Public Works Department. Uh, we are currently looking for an Assistant Director of Public Works, which would oversee the CIP program. Um, you may or may not be familiar that our Public Works Department has historically always had either one or two Assistant Directors because it is a monster of a, of an operation. And so with Ken's promotion up, it created some capacity for us to kind of just revisit that structure. And not simply just go back to saying, well, what was it like when there was an Assistant Director, you know, 10 years ago? But really looking at what's our need now. And our need now, based on what we can gather, is, is what was just presented to you today. And so we hope to have somebody on board to, to be involved with that exercise. So, any questions, comments on that front? Okay, great. Really quickly, it's somewhat related. So typically, after a CIP conversation in May, I just want to reiterate the point that we are working towards putting together a preliminary budget for you that we hope to distribute in mid-June. Historically, there, you never really had something tangible and physical to look at prior to our budget workshops in late June, and we want to change that approach too. And so our intention is to literally physically hand you a preliminary budget in mid-June so that you have some time to review that prior to our budget workshops at the end of June. And hopefully, it's a better conversation and discussion, and, and, and everybody really gets a sense of what we're trying to do. Um, especially this year, as we look at creative solutions to sort of continue this trend that we're, that we're embarking on. So any questions on the budget process or anything like that? If not, we're good. Those, that was the only city manager report that we had for tonight. Thank you all. And thanks again, Mike and the team, for all the work put into that.
And so.
And so, Mayor, I believe that takes us back to the workshop we were working on, the, for further discussion. And if I may, I'd like to circle back to a question that was asked to provide some further information, and I don't want to further muddy this issue. But Councilman Solis asked whether the lift fund proposal could be brought up, and we had a brief discussion about Robert's Rules of Order. And we concluded that with Councilman Balknight saying that he believed it would not be in order for us to have a motion to rescind. During the break, I went and grabbed my copy of Robert's Rules of Order, newly revised.
I already read it. I was wrong.
That simplifies things. Thank you. Okay. So yes, a motion.
I was thinking a motion to reconsider, and it had to be done during that same meeting.
Exactly, the point I was about to make. Furthermore, I was also wrong. I said that it would have to be approved by a supermajority vote. However, because the entire body, all seven members are here, a motion to rescind would be a simple majority. And so if someone wanted to have a motion to bring back the lift fund proposal, that could be made, seconded, and a simple majority would bring that item back before the body. By the way, if you really want to dig into the weeds, you could argue that a motion to rescind is not appropriate because we didn't take any action before. So there's nothing to rescind. It was simply voted down. In which case, we would fall back on our local code, which says that we take it up as if it were a new item never considered before, in which case it requires a simple majority. And if, if that wasn't enough, I could keep going, but yeah. So the, the simple answer to the question is yes. If somebody wanted to bring the lift fund proposal back up, there are several mechanisms through which to do that.
From my perspective. Did you get all that? Well, if I may, from my perspective on it, I think that that was brought up and at one time was voted down. And I want to honor that will of counsel. So I would hope that our conversation would simply go on to the People Fund that's before us so that we don't rehash all of that. Because I do respect the will of counsel from the previous vote. That's my opinion. So.
I'm fine with that.
So did we find out any further information on different numbers?
No. Well. One, one, one option that Thomas and I briefly discussed, and of course, it's up to council. But there's, there is an option to simply authorize, um, staff to enter into an agreement not to exceed 500,000, and then just let the numbers fall into play since it is a. and then just let the numbers fall into play since it is, it's a calculation that they simply take to come up with the figures. But that's up to all of you, how you want to proceed.
Okay. Go ahead. I'm sorry.
I have no problem with the 750. And I, and I don't understand why you want to reduce it. What would you spend the economic dollars on if you didn't spend it on getting small businesses? What would you? And you know, this brings up a topic that we all need to discuss sometime. I'd like to know everybody's view on economic development because I thought I understood, but it sounds like small, some people don't want to help small businesses and some people do. So it would be nice if we had a work session sometime. And it doesn't have to be presented by, just where we could come up with what's your vision for economic development in Victoria? And how do you want the economic dollars spent? I think we should discuss that at some time in the future. An open discussion where every one of us says what our vision is for the economic dollars. And then we can all work together, come to a consensus and work in one direction. But back to the 750, I don't see a problem with the 750.
But may I ask one, one question of order here? How do we amend a budget before we establish a project, a, a program?
That's a great question, and I thank you for asking that. City Manager Garza actually asked me that question before we put together this agenda. And the reason I put it together in this order is because that's what we would typically do, is make sure the money is available and budgeted before we approve a program. Sometimes we'll do that by having the first reading of a budget amendment with a city manager's report. And then on the second and third reading of the budget amendment, we would approve the project itself, the contract along with it. However, in this case, I think it's very clear that there is not yet a clear consensus on what the dollar figure would be or even what the project would look like. And so it would be my recommendation in this case that if we want to move forward, you take the items out of order and first hash out the details of what that program would look like by considering item E1.
Well, that's what I was, I was going to entertain a motion on item E to, to move forward on the People Fund by one of the councilmen who's, who is willing to go there. And then we can, in discussion of that, talk about an amount.
I move we go forward.
In, in what amount?
750,000 or 748,000, whatever it was on the screen.
There's a motion to hear a second?
A second.
We have a sub motion, a second to approve 748,000.
Mayor, if I may, yeah, there, we have a, a motion that was drafted or a resolution that I drafted and I put on your table for consideration just so that we would have a document prepared in case we got to this point. And if I may consider Councilman Lofgren's motion as a motion to approve this resolution as drafted. The critical element of it, if you look down at paragraph one, "The city hereby establishes an economic development program under chapter 380 of the Texas Local Government Code to provide loans or grants of public money to promote local economic development within the city of Victoria." And then sub-paragraph A, consisting of "a business resiliently microloan program administered through Financial Services 380 Agreement with People Fund and dedicating no more than $750,000 to fund the program." If.
Which one is that?
I'm sorry. It's, it's one of the two like this. Look down at the bottom of the page for the one that has the sub.
Is it 74 or 75?
75.
075. If we were to simply strike paragraph 1B, which describes the grant program, then this resolution would accomplish the goal as stated by Councilmember Lofgren.
So does he have to restate it and?
It's not necessary unless someone requires him to.
Okay.
So you're saying that's what the motion is?
Councilman Lofgren, is that what your motion is?
That's what my motion is.
There's been a motion in a second.
For 750,000.
For to apply up to 750,000 to People Fund, so.
But we're striking B.
But we're striking B on?
Correct.
I would, I would like to move that we strike B from the resolution.
Thank you.
Okay. I second it that way.
So we vote on that first.
Do you move to amend?
I move to amend. Thank you.
So if you want to make a, take a vote.
So this is a resolution without the amount?
This is, no, this resolution does have an amount. Paragraph 1A says no more than 750,000.
Got you. All right.
And there's been a motion to strike paragraph B, which was the grant program, since council is not interested in entertaining that at the moment. So we need a vote on the motion to amend.
Even though that really wasn't ever his motion. I mean, really, his motion was just A.
Agreed. It can be interpreted that way. But, but for, in the interest of clarity, this provides us an opportunity to take a vote on the grant program by affirmatively striking it from this resolution and considering the breadth of discussion that we've had on this subject. I think it's probably advisable to, to provide some clarity on that subject.
Can I make another suggestion?
Yes, you may.
On the first, the number one, it also has the word grant. So if you're going to strike that B, I think you would strike grants up there or grants if you just want to do the provide loans.
Yes, sir. Yes, ma'am. You could strike the word or grants from paragraph number one as well. That would provide the greatest degree of clarity.
And when do we come up with the amount?
The amount is stated in there, no more than 750,000. And the People Fund contract itself totals 748,000.
Can I call the question to the motion to amend by striking B before we go down too much of a rabbit hole?
So he's called the question to vote on the amendment to remove paragraph B from the resolution as drafted?
Okay. So we need a motion in a second.
We have to start and do another amendment?
We can do another amendment. Let's just vote on this B and get it out of the way.
Get this one off the table. You don't need another motion.
There you go.
All of those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Opposed? One?
That's a six, one vote to strike sub-paragraph B.
Right.
Wanted to get rid of the or grants before we.
Yes. Well, because it would kind of be what we're doing with B.
Agreed. It, it leaves in some ambiguity.
I'll move to amend the number one to re, to strike out or grants. A second.
You have a motion in a second to further amend?
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Same sign?
That leaves a motion on the table to approve a 380 Economic Development Program in an amount not to exceed 750,000 by entering into an agreement with People Fund.
I'd like to look at what I think is the latest contract, which is the one in our, in our book here, under eligible applicants.
Help us out, Ms. Scott, if you can tell us what page you're looking at. The page numbers are at the bottom of the page.
Page two. Page two.
That's page two of eight. And if you're flipping through your binder, start with the tab labeled People Fund. It's the first document behind that tab.
And it's under eligible applicants. And paragraph B is for businesses that don't have a loan with People Fund but have an established physical address in Victoria. I really liked the wording and the arrangement in the grant program, which was that it would be a locally owned, independent business responsible for revenue and expenses. I think that's more what we're trying to address than any business that has an address in Victoria. And I, I assume we have some leeway in the applicants.
A point of order, how do we make changes to this agreement between People Fund and City of Victoria within the confines of the resolution?
Yeah. In answer to that point of inquiry, that, the way she would do that is to condition, she would amend the resolution to condition it upon this contract being amended as follows.
But, so the item that we're on now is strictly budget-related.
No, sir. I'm sorry. We, we skipped to item E1, which is the approval of the program.
Okay. I missed that.
It's been a bit of a whirlwind.
Because it made no point to do the other one.
Right. And, and Councilman Scott, if I.
I believe if you look at E1, that's actually the budget amendment because it has a hearing attached to it. D. D has the hearing.
E1 is the budget amendment. E1 is the adoption of the program.
I think everybody's just that tired now.
Yeah. Yeah. So as, as. As a question of clarification, Ms. Scott, if you were to make that motion to add that language into this contract or to require that language to be added into the contract, how would you define what is a locally owned business? If I'm going to have to draft that into the contract, I need to know exactly what I'm adding.
Owned by an individual or an entity that has a City of Victoria address.
So if a business were owned by another business that had an address in Victoria, that would still suffice to be a locally owned business? I'm not trying to argue with you. I just want to try to clarify this point.
Well, that, that's not really the spirit of what we've had four and a half hours of discussion about.
Are you looking for a majority of beneficial ownership by a resident of the City of Victoria?
Maybe so.
It might be as simple as. Maybe the verbiage is throwing you off a little bit. I, I know that in previous agreement that we reviewed, the language was, was simply that the business be located within city limits.
But I really liked the, the fact that it had to be locally owned as well. That really, because that's what we've been talking about.
If I may, Ms. Scott, I'm, I'm concerned about the ramifications of, of trying to overdefine something. Because if, for example, I were to create a business and, and, you know, as a lawyer, that I, I might choose to make that business a Delaware corporation for various different corporate reasons, right? I might be a, a local resident. The corporation might actually be a Delaware corporation.
The majority beneficial interest kind of covered that then.
It would, except in the case of silent partners and other corporate arrangements to protect primary owners.
That who's really going to be applying for this?
I'm just, we're, we're getting excessively complicated to solve a problem that may not exist.
The type of loans these are.
Okay? I just, I'm concerned that we're, we're getting very, very complicated in order to try to answer this. I, I understand your concept.
And it really goes in A as well as B, but it especially goes in.
But aren't we hiring these people to take care of all of those things for us? I mean, they're going to be doing the screening and everything else. I think we're over.
But a, a corporate franchise would qualify. You know, a, a corporate franchise that has a location in Victoria would qualify. And that's not, I don't think that's who any of us have been thinking about when we've been talking about this program.
That's what I mean. That's why you're going to hire People Fund to do that for you.
But you got to spell it out in this contract with them.
Yeah, they, they don't have to do it unless we.
Okay.
Put that limit. So we have to come up with the exact language? Is that what you're saying?
If you're, if you're instructing us to not approve this contract unless it has specific language in it, I need to know what that language is.
Ms. Scott, may I, while you're working on that, I have a concern on page two as well, 5C, on the loan term we talked about. The loan term in this document is a total of, if my math is correct, seven years? Six months of 0% interest plus.
Up to.
Yes, sir.
Up to.
Your concern is that that's longer than the term of this agreement?
Or that it's just too long in general?
From my experience talking to bankers that were proponents of similar fund, I had to ask because I was concerned that the amortization schedule put a, a burden on the business if it was a two to three-year term. But what was explained to me is you don't want to change that because you exponentially increases the default rate if you go past three years.
Well, isn't the People Fund the expert on doing the loans and they would decide?
I don't know. We said these bankers that we were all talking about earlier were experts and we should be listening to them. So do we listen to them?
They're different types of loans.
They're different types of loans, yes. But aren't they the expert? I mean, that's what they do. They've done it for years. Shouldn't they, shouldn't we have a little faith here? It seems like everyone wants to find something wrong with it.
I find a lot of wrong with it.
Find something right with it. That's what we should be about, is trying to find a solution.
Well, that's what I'm expressing my concern that I don't like that and I would like to propose a different solution.
Well, propose an amendment if you want. I think we should go with the way it's stated and quit trying to split hairs.
So I would move to amend item, or I would move to.
Say it. I think we have another pending amendment.
Are we voting on the whole thing?
No. Were you going to amend the language?
Yeah.
So can we deal with that first?
Well, what the city attorney has recommended is that we do another amendment to the motion so that the first paragraph, number one, read "The city hereby establishes an economic development program under chapter 380 of the Texas Local Government Code to provide loans of public money to locally owned businesses to promote local economic development within the city of Victoria." And so I would move that the motion be amended as such.
So we have a motion? Is there a second? So the amendment?
Second.
Motion in a second.
I, I'll just briefly explain the conversation that Ms. Scott and I had. The sidebar is that this additional term would effectively add the term to the contract that the, the business have to be, have to be locally owned. We recognize that there's some ambiguity associated with the description of what locally owned means. But I think Ms. Scott was comfortable letting that ambiguity lie.
That way, the contract, the contract would not have to be amended.
So with that, we have a motion in a second for the, Ms. Scott's amendment. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Same sign? That amendment passes. Now, Mr. Bocknight.
Okay. I move to amend 1A of the resolution from 750,000 to 500,000.
A second.
Motion is second to amend 1A to change the number from 750 to 500,000. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Was it four to three?
I need to see who opposed. I'm sorry.
All, all for the amendment to change to 500,000.
Which way did you vote?
I voted aye.
I said four to three. So now we're back to the motion to approve the, the, the loan fund with People with the two amendments. Three amendments, actually. So I'd entertain a motion. All right. So they're amended. Okay. So we're going to vote on the motion to approve the People Fund for an amount from the city for 500,000. All those in favor say aye? Aye. All those opposed?
Aye.
Two?
Aye. I'm, I'm for it. It, it's 500,000?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. I kind of missed that. Aye.
So you're for it?
Not really, but I'm voting for it because.
But again.
Because once it's our decision, now I'm 100% for it.
So. Hope y'all can figure all that out and go ahead. We're going to get 500,000.
Yeah, I'm going to have to go watch the video.
And I think that pretty much.
Not tonight, though.
Oh, we got to do the amendment.
The budget amendment?
And so the other document that I, that I brought forward to you as a draft, which has the number 074 at the top, is a draft budget amendment. And in the first numbered paragraph, funding in the amount of, we can fill that blank in now with 500,000 now that we know what the scope of the program is. And then that motion, if there is a motion to approve that with the number 500,000 filled in that blank, that. And then, that motion, i-if there is a motion to approve that with the number 500,000 filled in that blank, that would effectuate a budget amendment. We will need a public hearing on this, and it is considered as an emergency reading, which will require affirmative vote of five members of council.
So, I have that, uh, public hearing now?
We don't have a motion on the floor yet.
After the motion. Okay.
I move that we adopt the budget amendment with a figure of 500,000 in number one.
A second.
We have a motion and a second, and now, I will open a public hearing on this matter. Anybody who would like to step forward to speak to this matter, please do so now. Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing. Therefore, we can go for the vote on this matter. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oh, excuse me.
Do you say this has to have a supermajority?
Yes, because it's an, an emergency reading, we could split it and have second and third reading at a subsequent meeting, and then, it would only need a simple majority.
And if it passes by simple majority, what's the result?
It fails.
It fails. And then, we just bring it up at another meeting?
We could bring it up at a subsequent meeting, yes, and it would come back as if it had not been read before.
But we just pass them?
Would the original motion still be in place, just the budget?
So, the, the motion to approve the program has already passed. We've moved beyond that. The 380 program has been created. The question now, and it's a strategic question that Ms. Scott is asking, has to do with whether or not we consider this as an emergency reading the way it was proposed, which would require five affirmative votes for it to pass tonight. Or if she were to split the second and third reading off of tonight, then we would only be required to have a simple majority vote of four members to pass it tonight. Regardless, if it does fail tonight, it can be brought up at a subsequent meeting as if it had not been read previously.
Don't really know whether Lift Fund is, People Fund, uh, is going to accept our 500,000 because we haven't been able to talk to them.
That's correct.
But I don't foresee it being an issue, to be honest with you.
Yeah. Okay.
It's just, we just don't know the specific breakdown, but we can figure that out and go from there.
Probably, based upon their, their third. You're looking at about 335, and if they match that, you got about 670.
We're about where we were.
Would be my guess.
Right. And kind of thinking through my head right now, that's actually where my head was landing, was that, you know, I'd like to try and kind of think of the silver linings and some of the positives that might come out of, you know, the weeks of deliberation. And if the original loan pool was going to be close to 680,000, and we're somehow close to 680 with a lesser investment, well, maybe that's the silver lining positive story, right, that we were still able to get out a 680,000 capital loan pool, except rather than investing 750, we only invested 500. I'm just trying, I'm just trying to, you know.
Ms. Scott, if I can circle back to your question...
I would hope with a lot of compromise, I would hope with a lot of compromise from all, all areas that we could reach some sort of conclusion tonight. So, with that, I would call for the vote. All those in favor of approving the budget amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
So, that's a 5-2 vote. It does pass on supermajority emergency reading.
So, so I think that's, we're done. And once again, counsel, I want to thank all of you for doing the hard work for these difficult decisions and working to come to some conclusion. And I look forward to working with y'all and moving forward because I know there's going to be a lot more hard decisions to make in the months to come. And I want to thank each and every one of you for your contribute, your contribution to the discussion, and it was all valuable. And we'll move on, and thank you again very much. And with that, we're done.